I do not have another device with me, sir. Please share this so other people can see it. Thank you.
Okay.
You. I am.
Okay. This was back in 2014. So, did you fall?
Accurate?
I'd like to call the Board of County Commissioners at this time, as people are still... We will recess this meeting to the fourth floor of the Macon County Franklin North Carolina 2X734.
Overboarded, guys. Just on the left. Just before. Moving like.
Where you gonna live?
Keep it moving next. Let's figure out how to work.
On our agenda, I would like to pass to Chairman Higginson, who requested at previous meeting a detail of the article funding in total for Macon County. I have that. I'll distribute this to the board at this time. This provides the summary. Of course, we'll have to provide any additional details as the board would request. Macon County, grand total, received 7.85 million. And that is the 6.96 million that was received through the county overall, as well as $178,952 in housing, $547,252 in public health, and $164,350 in transit. So I'm going to pass that summary out to you at this time. And again, we're happy to provide any details for you. This time, I would like to entertain a motion for Chairman of Macon County Board of Commissioners.
All right. I would, actually, before we get started, let me just make a quick announcement. For my apologies ahead of time, I just recently had surgery. So the chances of me lasting through the entire meeting tonight is probably going to be pretty slim to none. So I will stay as long as I can, but as soon as that pain starts hitting, I will be exiting. I'll try my best not to be disruptive, so thank you guys for being patient with me on that. And on that note, are we doing, are we doing my meeting right now? Yes. Okay. I would like to present to the board, I'd like to nominate Josh Young for our chairman for this year.
Okay, we got a nomination. If you all hear a second. Okay, here and done. That motion will die for lack of a second. I will now, at this time, entertain a motion for Chairman of Macon County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Manager, I hold a few of these guys up here, and we think it's a good thing Macon is changing leadership every year. It's present, we've had, but I talked to these gentlemen, and Mr. Gary Shields expressed a great interest in serving as chairman of this board. Known Gary for 67 years. Through both passions, we had a lot in common. I respect him greatly. And with that being said, it's been an honor to serve this last year, and trying to get these five independent papers on the same page, ain't nobody can do that. But we're here to represent the people, and I'm glad we have independent fakers that have spoken, and it is with service. It'd be a great pride to, a great honor to not let Mr. Gary Shields, Chairman of the Board, press coming here.
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second.
Mr. Manager, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Here and done. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. Talk about that. I get to do it once a year, so I'm... So, okay, we have a motion and a second. Here and no discussion. I'll now call the question for Mr. Gary Shields, for Chairman of Macon County Board of Commissioners. All members in favor, signal by saying aye and raising your right hand. Let the record reflect unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Congratulations. Just get us out of here before Christmas.
I just spilled a thumb, two thumbs. My momma David turned over the grave.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to Josh Young, Big Gosh, Chairman. Any other discussion or anything? Young, can you type it down?
Yes, sir.
Oh, we'll follow the green. The vote?
I'll be pulling two cards twice now. Paul, can you hit the microphone poster, please?
Oh, I'll hear you.
Thank you. Thank you. I've had cataract surgery both eyes, so I have to have these to read, and I have to have these to see back there.
Just so you can think in both directions.
I hear quantum perpetual. And this is where we are. The affirmation of the 2024 regular meeting schedule. I think you've got a copy of that in your folder.
I also distributed a copy this part of the meeting.
Okay. Do you want to have a copy? You have a motion to accept this. It's the 2024 meeting date and the agenda and due date, Macon County Board of Commissioners 2024 regular meeting schedule.
So, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Any more discussion?
I don't know that it's really that important, but last year, Commissioner Anken, the February meeting was on that was around there. Does that...
Something.
Third, third seat. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Yeah, four, eight. Sorry.
Okay. Any more discussion? Non of the vote, raising right hand, aye. Yeah. Eric, I wonder if he must be looking at us now. This chair, what you do, six and seven, most of South, and where you believe this way.
Everybody's safe. Most of South is in the case.
I plead with diligence, citizen, I, United States of America, in this regard, for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No public comment. So, public comment here. One thing that, the last couple of weeks, that's been in, he's been in the, having some hip surgery, but we've been able to talk to him on the phone, and the rest of us have been able to meet one-on-one. And we felt like it, we need to go back and look into the public comment period that's in our book to make sure that we're going by the rules or the policy that's in here. I think the thing that taught the most, we want to make sure, and I'm not sure you have it in here, it's downstairs, guideline for public comment. I'm having a hard time seeing that clock back there. I was thinking about 17 hours. But anyway, we'll have a total of 45 minutes to be allotted to the public comment period. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Speakers will be taken on a first come, first served basis by using the sign-up sheet. Topics must be related to Macon County only. Action by the board members on topics is not to be expected. So if you bring something forward, and you're expecting us to act on it, we won't be. You'll be also speaking to the board, not individuals, address us as the board, and also, the board, in this situation right now, will not be interacting with the questionnaires or the speakers, who might be bored, will not be active. We will listen to what you have to say. And so, I just saw these a few days ago, and didn't know where it's going to land tonight. That's why we go by this meeting here. Do we have any sign-up for people?
Yes, sir. Anyone else like to sign up for public comment? Folks, I'd like to make an announcement as well. Any outburst will not be tolerated. We're going to keep this civil. I spoke to Mr. Shields prior to this meeting. If that does continue like it has in months past, you'll be asked to leave. Thank you.
Well, this girl, she's well. She's... Perhaps she did.
Well, right off, Mr. Chairman, I get to say congratulations. And on an election that all of us are very pleased.
Now, turn the microphone on.
But thank you, Mr. Higginson. You have been an excellent chairman, despite my efforts to give you grief. Thank you. I was very disappointed to hear that the proposal I'd made for setting aside a viewscape for Macon residents was virtually sneered at. I was told that it was not a project that you all would be interested in. So I am here today to convince you otherwise. Is there anybody here that does not remember Charlie? Oh, God, what was his last name? I knew it through all of my rehearsals, and now...
What was his first name?
He was the chairman in 2008. Charles Lederman. Charles Lederman. Is there anybody here that doesn't know him? That is, I suspected. And I have a fun story to relate, where Charlie was listening to a presentation I made, and I had brought in a very large photograph of a barn and a oak tree that I was using as a demonstration point. And after the talk was done, Charlie reached over and he said, "Let me see that picture." And he brought it up to the diast, and said, "Boy, that is a gorgeous, gorgeous picture. Where is that, Charlie?" And I said, "Charlie, that is your front yard. It's your barn. You pass it every day." What it taught me was that Maconians who grow up here, you get so accustomed to the environs that it takes someone like me, coming from Philadelphia in 2001, and realizing, wow, this is a land of wonder, of scenic enrichment. It's just God's gift. But you are slowly letting it fritter away. And let me show the audience one of the examples of which I speak. Does anybody out there remember this? Do you know where that is? It was called Frog Town. And many of you grew up watching your first drive-in movies and probably having your first kiss in Frog Town. There are now five buildings on it. You don't even understand that, perceive that it's gone. And... Yes?
Could you speak to the board, please, of the audience? Thank you.
Following your directions, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sher, can you recognize this? This, everybody, is a scenic wonder in Highlands that locals and visitors alike are anxious to go see. It's called Sunset Rock. I cannot take that picture anymore, because as iconic as that tree is, there are now six buildings that have been put on that hillside. So it's lost forever. You still have a chance to save this. Regrettably, the woman that owned this property was dying, and I did not have a chance to ever show her this, but this is the most iconic view, not in Macon County, not in North Carolina, but very possibly in the eastern U.S. If you are on Route 40 and going toward Raleigh, you get a magnificent vista coming down that when you were coming from Hayesville, and you get to the ice cliffs, there is that turnoff that is very expansive in Macon County.
Thank you, Mr. Sher. Good time with the... Thank you, man. Thank you.
Very quickly, you must talk to Paul Pacetti and get the new owners to lower their houses so that people do not see it when they're on Route 28.
Thank you very much.
Where's my helper?
Where's my helper?
I'll help you.
Congratulations. Uh, I just wanna bring up something that happened in last month's meeting, and I had to leave early. I guess it's a good thing I left early. Um, I'd probably be in a rental motel. But on behalf of a lot of citizens in Macon County, and you know me, I speak my mind, I stand for what I believe is true, but a lot of us feel that publicly, John, you owe Derek an apology.
We just gotta address this by our names, this is the board, thank you.
We just feel like there should be an apology publicly, um, coming. You know, if you had nine thousand people come in this room and said hateful things, it wouldn't be pleasant. And we need to be pleasant. Whether, whether we like one another, or we agree with one another, or we don't agree with one another, we still need to be pleasant, and civil, and respectful. That's all I have to say.
Let me, uh, just take a moment here to share, uh, what we've been doing the last couple of weeks. A couple of weeks ago, Congressman Higginson, at that time, asked if we could all...
Can't carry it.
What about now?
Yes.
All right. A couple of weeks ago, called Mr. Higginson, Chairman Higginson at that time, and requested to have the opportunity to speak with our, uh, other commissioners individually, and him for each of that. And also include himself in the meetings. So, we spent two weeks working each other individually. And Mr. Antoine was there on the phone, wow, 'cause he had his surgery. But one thing we concluded with is that we will agree to disagree in a respectful manner. And that, that's what you were alluding to there. And we all agree that. And I'm gonna let John Scher tell you what, maybe your family or your, your children wants to say. Something very short that he shared with us in a committee as we went through this, and what he shared there with us was one hundred percent true. John, do you remember that?
I sure do. In that meeting, um, I stated it several months ago, um, that my kids have always told me, they said, "Dad, it's not what he says, it's how he said it." And I agree with that one hundred percent. I have an issue, but I'm gonna tell you. If you backed me in a corner, and when I come out of that corner, it's gonna get over. I'm not gonna crumble, I'm not gonna bow down to whatever. But I assure you that when I come out of that corner, it's not gonna be pleasant. And in my mind, I was backed in the corner, and that's not where I'm gonna be. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I did, uh, uh, write a statement that I would like to, uh, give after the public comment session, if that, that will be okay?
No, Mr. Higginson.
Thank you.
Thank you. We, we talked about a lot of things, some of the good things, how we wanna improve, those type of things. This is one area that we're gonna focus on, uh, and that's why we, we want you to speak to us. Don't speak to the audience out there, speak to us, and, uh, or we can tune into you. And also, uh, we, we won't get into interactive piece with you, 'cause you're speaking to us. All right? Uh, thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Linda Tyler?
Linda Tyler, as he said. Can you hear me? All right. I just wanted to speak to all of the commissioners this evening to say a couple of things. First, I hope that you will take a vote to appoint Ms. Marshall Moxley to the, uh, the applicant that was previously proposed by the Hudson Library Board to fill our open seat on the Macon County Public Library Board, because we need a full board to do what we are called to do. I'd also ask the commissioners to share the draft of the new Fontana Regional Library Agreement that you developed with the Fontana Regional Library, sorry, Regional Library Board, and to discuss with them the changes you proposed. They may have some information that would be helpful. Also, I wanna say that personally, I do oppose the resolution to make our school board a partisan race. We'll learn a lot more about the candidates' views and ideas, I think, by talking to them or reading what they have to say about the school board and what they think should be done for our citizens here than by looking at a letter that follows their name. And voters who don't wanna take the time to read or listen to the candidates should consider whether they are making an informed decision. As was discussed at last month's meeting, one of the main reasons for making this change is that some people didn't read the instructions on their ballot at the last election, and therefore voted incorrectly, and were unwilling to take the time to correct the error. And that doesn't seem like a good reason to change the rules to me. Also, keep in mind that one of the stated reasons for the proposed change is that about fifty percent of the counties in North Carolina have a partisan school board race. That means that about fifty percent of the counties don't have a partisan school board race, which I think is worth keeping in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I like standing on this side when I don't have to answer to you guys sometimes. However, I know you have a hard job, and there's a couple things that I like to bring to the board's attention. This time of year, we're thinking about the budget for coming years, so one of them's gonna be that. The other two are these, uh, two, um, elections we're talking about. The first one on the Board of Commissioners, if the resolution goes any further than state, there will have to be, and I think the public deserves that it be a total public hearing on that, because Highlands and Anahoga right now have a representative from those areas, which represents a couple thousand voters. The reason we have two at large in Franklin area, we have thirty-three, four thousand people down here. So, percentage-wise, you'd have to divide the county up for, um, a fair representation. Second, on the Board of Education, you know, I really don't want my children and the children in Macon County be controlled by both Democrat or Republican. I worked for the county for thirty-five years, five Democrats hired me, five retired me, who are Republicans. I worked with three twos, four ones, all the way through. We are citizens of Macon County, our children are here to get an education, and we should provide the best regardless of your affiliation. And third thing I like to say, I read in, uh, some social media today about the arts programs and the middle school and that. You know, every child going through school may not be a ball player, they may not be an artist, they may not be a welder, but we are in the education business to demonstrate different areas that their talents are. There's some very fine artists in this county, musicians, artists, sculptures, people that do all kind of things. But if our child is not exposed to these things, then it's gonna be detrimental. Arts, as I found out today from the school board, a lot of that is having to be picked up by the county commissioners, because the state gives us like four positions for everything. So, if you got an art teacher going through three schools, they may get an hour a day at a school, by time of driving and all that. We need to step up, we need to do better for our children. Again, I believe our responsibilities start at the very youngest and go to the very oldest. And it is budget, um, issues, but I do hope you consider those things. I know it's hard, but we need to think and plan ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Antoine. Ms. Wilson?
I'm Hillary Wilkes, member of the Macon County Board of Education, and tonight, I'm here to speak on behalf of our full board in regard to the potential resolution discussed at your last meeting to change our seats from nonpartisan to partisan. Thank you for making the decision to table your resolution and tell our board that an opportunity to discuss and weigh in on this issue. At our November meeting, we each shared our thoughts, and we all share an opposition to such a change, and have voted unanimously on the following resolution. Whereas recent debate among the Macon County Board of Commissioners held without notice to or input from the Macon County Board of Education, with the general public, has included the question of whether the county should petition the local delegation to the NC General Assembly for a local act enabling or requiring the Macon County Board of Education to be elected on a partisan basis. And whereas local interest and concerns have been portrayed as the impetus for supporting such a change, yet recent years demonstrate a widespread political effort with the number of school boards elected in a partisan manner, growing from just seventeen of one hundred and fifteen school boards in two thousand and fifteen to more than fifty after the most recent General Assembly. And whereas members of the Macon County Board of Education have been elected on a nonpartisan basis since at least nineteen sixty-eight. And whereas if the board were elected on a partisan basis, Macon County citizens who are registered independent or unaffiliated would be required to petition for inclusion on ballots, and pursuant to the Hatch Act, those who are federal employees would be forced to choose between their employment and holding office, or even participating in a partisan election for the Board of Education. And whereas school board members, unlike other elected officials, must bear sole allegiance to the students and parents they serve, and not leaders or platforms of specific political parties. And whereas school boards have the primary responsibility for setting school policy and hiring school teachers and administrators, and neither of these responsibilities should be influenced by political party affiliation. And whereas educational issues decided by the school boards are nonpartisan issues, and the board's judicial and personnel functions must be nonpartisan. And whereas the undersigned members believe that our board has functioned well over the past fifty-five years with nonpartisan elections, affording respectful interaction and appropriate focus on a school board's singular mission, the education of the students of our county. And whereas injecting party politics into school board elections would shift the focus away from candidates who are singularly committed to the education of Macon County students. And whereas the focused civil discourse and cooperative spirit exercised by all school board members for the greater good of our community would be harmed by partisan school board elections. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that in order to best serve the citizens and students of Macon County, the undersigned members of the Macon County Board of Education hereby respectfully and adamantly request that consideration of any measure to make school board elections partisan in Macon County cease, and that the General Assembly refuse to take up any such measure. Signed, Jim Brelo, Board Chair, Melissa Evans, Vice Chair, Dieter Breeden, Stephanie Lassiter, and Hillary Wilkes. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Baste! All right, ladies, go baste, just baste like a turkey. I'm sure I finally got it.
You're just serving.
We're making progress. Maybe in another couple of years, I'll get it right. Betsy Baste is coming up after me, so when she comes up, yeah, it's just like you baste a turkey. And that was, uh, sorry, not gonna address the crowd, but that was a very moving, uh, reasoning there from the Board of Education. And, uh, hopefully I'll be a little bit more coherent this month. Last month, I was kinda out of sorts, 'cause I was so worked up, and I couldn't read my phone. So, I decided to type out this stuff this time, so I could actually read it. I got a lot to say, but, uh, mostly what I wanted to say was, first of all, thanks, congratulations to our new board, Chair, Vice Chair, and, and thanks for coming. Uh, and, and thanks for allowing us to have these, uh, moments where the public can talk. And I think it's very important for the public to be able to address their elected, uh, officials. Um, I'm here first to discuss the, uh, the motion about the Board of Education be partisan. Uh, I think we heard a lot of great arguments already against it. I have, and actually, I noticed that both sides of the room were clapping. And both sides of the room haven't been clapping a lot in the last couple of meetings, so that's kind of a really good indication of where the public stands, I think, on the Board of Education. Uh, I decided, uh, let's see, I had to leave the last meeting early, yep. Furthermore, if the board candidates are nonpartisan, partisan, now why do they show up on the, on the Republicans' ballot list to begin with? If they're nonpartisan, they shouldn't be part of the, the vote, who to vote for from the Republicans, 'cause they're not running as Republicans. So, I think that basis that was used last month as a reason for wanting to do this partisan thing, I think it doesn't really hold water. Um, it, it sounds like that we're being asked to fix a mistake that, that really wasn't something that the public, uh, had control over. Uh, but the bigger concern that I'm here tonight for is that, uh, I'd like to ask the commission to do a little bit more research before coming public with future issues. Uh, the last couple of issues that have addressed, that we've addressed, the, in particular, the library, uh, seems to be just, uh, a, a wedge that's dividing this, this community apart. And I think I would like to see us look at more issues that we could do that will bring the community together. It sounds like this education thing is one of them. Um, I'm a lifelong Republican. Uh, some of my friends who are Democrats don't realize that, because I've been a Democrat lately. But I've been a lifelong Republican, and I don't see how we got to this point where there's a few people in charge who believe that libraries are trying to push pornography on our children, that these same people are trying to push rules that will prevent the library from promoting any issue that they disagree with, like Black History Month, or Pride Month, or Women's Month. This last, last month at the library board meeting, they passed some kind of resolution that says that, that the library won't take any stance on anything. But I'm sure Christmas and, and, and Easter are sacred, they'll be fine. Um, as far as Hanukkah and Kwanzaa, that'll be up to the morality police, 'cause that's gonna be a different call altogether. Um, they claim not to want to ban books, but I've seen what's happened in Kansas, where they label books trash, and then they ban the trash. So, we're gonna have big book bans, this is, this is coming. It, the, people might say that's not gonna happen, but it's gonna happen, 'cause that's what's happening already. I'd be remiss to not call out Moms for Liberty, just this last week, had a big week. Their, their, uh, vice chair, or no, the chair, the founder, was found guilty of having a, a, a bisexual relation with, with, in, in her marriage, um, and, and she hasn't stepped down yet, but I'm, I'm thinking she's gonna step down. The husband was the Democrat, uh, the Republican Party leader of Florida. Uh, these people are trying to tell us how to live our lives, while at the same time, they're living this thing that they're talking down. So, these people are hypocrites, okay? So, they, they don't, they shouldn't hold, why, why do they get to say how we live our lives up here in North Carolina when they're, when they're living their lives out of integrity? I don't care what they do. I don't. I embrace gay people, I embrace straight people, I embrace people, you get to be whoever you want. When I grew up, I had buddies named Biggin, Littlein, Skeeter, Booger, uh, whatever. We called them what they wanted to be called. Now, somebody wants to be called a she, or a he, or a him, or her, it's a big deal. No, it's not a big deal. You don't even have to do that, that's what they say they prefer to be called. So, in closing, I just wanna say thank you for letting me speak, and just remember that we should all just live like, like the sign out behind here on the Presbyterian Church, where we love our neighbor who doesn't look like you, doesn't think like you, doesn't love like you, doesn't speak like you, doesn't pray like you, doesn't vote like you. But everyone should be welcome.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you very much.
I brought the holiday spirit. I was afraid I was going to set off the metal detector out here. Thank goodness Sheriff Holbrooks was there to let me through. Evening, gentlemen. Betsy Bass. I do want to wish you all a Merry Christmas. I'm going to make an assumption that you are Christians. If you're not, then Happy Hanukkah, because we are still in Hanukkah week, and we do have Jewish people in our community. And I recognize how difficult your jobs all are, and it's kind of fun that you've mixed it up, and now you get to try different jobs on, and that'll be interesting to see how that plays out. We also have difficult jobs, and that is that I'm fairly certain, as people of integrity this board is, that you don't want to operate in the dark. I'm fairly certain that you want to serve the public, as was stated earlier this evening, to represent the people. I wrote it down and you said it. Not naming names, but you said it, it was great. And I think that that's very true, and if that is true, I want to make sure that you represent all of us. And I lose a lot of sleep over the fact that I've got to be here because I'm not always certain that the representation is here for all of us. And I feel now that in my time of my life, I can actually pay attention to what's going on. And so I had a friend in California who lives in a very, very small town, just like our town, mountain town, and she said, "Why do you live in a place that has some of the same issues that I have?" And I said, "Well," I said, "we all have the same issues, but I know for a fact that here in Macon County, those people behind me that I'm not looking at or talking to, they will take the shirt off your back if you need it, and they will help you. They will plow your driveway, they will help you find your dog, they will help you put up a barn, they will do whatever it is to help your neighbor." And it is a goosebumps, I'm probably going to cry, because I think that that's very true of where we live, and that's why I love it here, because I know that that's who we are as a people. So how much time have I got? Who's the timekeeper? Two minutes? Okay, good. I have time. And so I beg of you to operate under the idea of unity. And so if you put Ds and Rs and whatever else you want on the partisan school board issue, that's not unifying. Gentlemen, let's just call it what it is, it is not unifying. Someone said last month that you should not be afraid of having a D or an R after your name. Well, you know what? Let's judge us all on the merits of the individual. And as has been stated many times more eloquently than this, you know, I believe that that person who's running, and that person who's running, that person's running is a good person and has the children at heart and the needs of the parents at heart. So let's let them continue to do their job as they're doing it and not change how our elections are for school board, because that's not unifying. And if you make that choice, we know where you stand on unity, and it makes me sad, and it makes me want to take off my holiday spirit because there is no spirit in that. There is no spirit in trying to pull apart the good people of Macon County who want to work together for the good of our children. Merry Christmas, happy New Year.
You've got thirty seconds.
I will say, Brother Shields, you'll always be brother to me, not chairman, so, but congratulations. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm against making the Board of Education a partisan office. First, there is little empirical evidence on either side to support any of the claims. Second, if you change it, you will inject party primaries into local school wishes whereas now there may be none. Then you will have school board members acting as traditional partisan politicians rather than as apolitical citizens, acting only in the interest for local schools, students, and our community. There is the potential for political red line if you decide to push for a partisan Board of Education. Thank you, and congratulations, brother.
Good evening. First of all, thank you, Sheriff, for what you said. I'm glad to hear that you're going to put a stop to some of the things that happened last week. I was really glad to see our newly-elected chairman make a statement that he's going to hold people accountable as well and make sure that we follow the rules, and so I'm going to start off by me following the rules. When you say addressing the commissioners, I'm going to be addressing you, but there's somebody that's sitting up there that I'm also going to address that's not a commissioner. I appreciate the work that all of you do, I appreciate the position that each of you hold. I'm going to talk about something without degrading, without insulting any of my commissioners by name, but I just want to let you know that last month, I went deer hunting, and I was at deer camp. And what do you do when you have nothing to do? The last thing you do is watch a five-and-a-half-hour county commissioner movie, but that's exactly what I did. And to be honest with you, it was embarrassing. I mean that with respect, but it was embarrassing, and I think all of you realize that, and that's why at the beginning of tonight's meeting, you've addressed those, and I'm really glad to see that. I'm really glad, and I have to say, Mr. Sheriff, I'm sorry to name you, but you made that comment earlier about you're going to read something a little later. I'm looking forward to reading that because I hope I get to hear something that I'm going to ask all of the commissioners of tonight. And I believe I will, because I know you, and I know you to be a Christian. So I believe I will hear something positive of what I'm wanting to hear. But what I'd like to do is I would like to address our county manager. I'd like to say something. I've had the opportunity in my thirty-two years with the sheriff's office, the last forty, twenty years serving as sheriff, you know, in my thirty-two years, I've had the opportunity to work with, I believe, five county managers. And I want you to know, Mr. Rowland, of all the county managers that I've ever worked with, and I've worked with all of them, I liked all of them, I could work better with some, not with others, but I could work with all of them, there's no county manager that I've ever worked with that worked harder for the citizens of Macon County, which include the employees that work for you, that work for these men. You stood up for us, you stood by us, you corrected us when we were wrong, but you listened to us, and we negotiated, we had discussions, but you always treated us with respect. You never degraded us, you never insulted us, you always spoke to us like the employees that we were and as human beings, and you conducted yourself as a Christian leader, and I appreciate that. And I know that I can speak for a lot of county employees, and I do tonight, because a lot of them called me and asked me if I would say something on behalf of the county employees. And so I say that on behalf of a lot of people, and I appreciate all the work that you do. I hope by the end of the night that you get a public apology, because it's okay for us to agree to disagree, it's okay for us, in fact, as voters in Macon County, we don't want you guys to always agree. We want you to have debates, we want you to have true discussions, so a lot of people don't feel like that things were done behind closed doors. And that's what people think. I was with a lot of you as a sheriff, I never heard anything done behind closed doors, and I was behind those closed doors a lot of times. And I know exactly what we were doing before these law meetings. We were getting a snack to eat, there was no business being conducted. Paul, I almost never saw you go back there because you didn't want to go back there, you felt like that it looked inappropriate, so you, most of the time, would never go back there. I respect that. Truthfully, I starved to death, so I was glad to get a little bit of food. And the county manager's been pretty tight, so he doesn't have a whole lot of food back there. But when you're here for several hours, it was important for us to be back there and get a little bit of something. In closing, I just want to reiterate again, thank you for the hard work you do there, you're a great county manager, you're a native of this community, you have this community at heart, and if your family is listening, I hope that they hear what I have to say tonight, because a whole lot of people feel the same way I do, and they listen to how you were treated last month, and it was embarrassing. I appreciate you.
I'm staggered a little bit on procedure. So, Mr. Manager, we're going to close this at this time, it was the last person on the list.
Yes, sir, this time we'll move right along to Mr. Shields to number ten, additions to the agenda.
Let me ask you one procedural thing. Mr. Sheriff has requested a comment. I still want to have a revival. That's not a revival, okay, but the preacher. But we've got business to take, and how do we have Mr. Sheriff make his comment without other people having up here to make the comment?
I think we could move that. First thing you can do right now, if you was chairman, want to give him that privilege, that's your, you can give him that privilege as chairman.
I think the honors is here, Mr. Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, Board. Tonight, I'd like to address this board and the people of Macon County, not the last commissioners meeting, they've had a little heated. Each of us loves this county and our communities as all of us desire for Macon County to succeed. I acknowledge that the path to success is often cluttered with different ideas and viewpoints, but at the end of the day, I believe we all want the same thing. Working together sometimes brings conflict, that is simply part of the process. However, I don't want conflict to define Macon County. I do want to define where I stand as an elected official and a taxpayer of Macon County. Tonight, I would like to clear the air about a few issues. Yes, I misspoke at last month's meeting and was wrong about the budget increase twenty-five million under Eric Rowland. It was my mistake. I spoke too hastily as I was thinking about both the fund balance and the budget in the heat of the moment. What I meant to point out was that the fund balance has increased by millions and millions, and the budget has increased millions and millions over the last eight years plus under Mr. Rowland's management. As usual, the media missed the whole point that the taxpayers of Macon County have gotten larger government and bigger salaries at the taxpayers' expense. Certain media outlets and other groups stirred controversy by twisting the narrative instead of reporting on the bigger picture. The speed can be put on any topic when information is purposely left out because some journalists have a history of making judgments on something without having a clue what had transpired behind the scenes to cause the friction in the first place. Let me be clear that I'm not against any county employees, as the haters falsely claim. We all appreciate their work, the same as we appreciate those in the private sector. I am a retired firefighter, an emergency medical responder, also a high school baseball coach, but none of us are special because of where we work. Again, I have stated I will always be grateful to county employees. If anyone says that I'm against employees, they are lying and causing division. However, I am against overstaffing. The taxpayers should not be paying for what is not needed. I fully support capital improvements that we can afford. There is a cost for everything, and Macon County is forced to live within its means without burden to the taxpayers. The taxpayers are the source of income for Macon County and the county employees. Before we can allocate a steel dime to any expenditure, we must first get it from the hard-working taxpayers, who I directly represent. Like many in this great county, I'm a lifelong conservative Republican, living God, family, country, and freedom. I will always fight for limited government, less taxes and more freedom. History has taught us the bigger the government equals less freedom and more taxes. I do not desire to bring national politics into the local arena, but unfortunately, what happens in Raleigh and Washington, DC, directly affects how Macon County operates. One way that national politics affected Macon County recently was the ARCA funds. This board did not have a chance to discuss our options for use of these funds, which could have potentially gone towards helping our children, schools, wrecked parts, emergency services, maintenance of facilities, and anything else to help our entire county as a whole. It was suggested to the county manager to wait until this board is further discussed, but he insisted on bringing this project to the forefront to give yet another bonus to the employees from which he himself would also greatly benefit. Even though I value this county's employees, it is my job to serve the taxpayers of this county, not the government. In serving the taxpayers, it is this board's duty to prevent overstaffing or inefficient spending, which undeniably extract precious dollars from taxpayers. This commissioners' board is tasked with, one, being effective and efficient with county government, questioning the gross amount in the undesigned fund balance, keeping taxes low, taking care of taxpayers' assets, among other things. If we add in the fire tax and the landfill fees, Macon County does not have the lowest tax rate in the state. Finally, in relation to my statement on November fourteenth that the county is falling apart, I spent five hours December fourth with the maintenance director, looking at some of the county properties that need some serious, serious attention. Properties we could have spent ARCA funds repairing, assets that we are responsible for upkeeping before we entertain taxing, the citizens of this county for things we cannot afford. You might love me, you might hate me, but I will always represent the taxpayers first and foremost, which is the task that this board all shares in common. If representing the taxpayers and being good stewards of the county's assets by challenging the growth of government is not our common goal, then there will obviously be division on this board. I encourage anyone to reach out to me to discuss any of these topics, because it is my desire to help Macon County succeed. And, Mr. Sheriff, I'd just like to address something here. The media said that I've asked for the manager's resignation based on ARCA funds. That is absolutely wrong. When I was in a meeting with him, and he said we were fifty percent overstaffed, and he said, "I never said that." So I didn't say that, okay?
This is, Mr. Sheriff shared his thoughts with you, and that'll be the last time. He said, once you've asked him to make his response, he's made a response, we won't be revisiting those type of things. And thank you, Mr. Sheriff, for your comments. This time, we'll take a motion to, what were we going to, turn?
Could I offer one more comment, just one more than Charlie Paul?
Andrew Reeder, please.
Real quick. Sarah Johnson, I live in Otto, North Carolina. Yeah, Sarah Johnson, sorry. If we could please allocate some funds for the art program and some teachers, if we do a lot to keep your mental health issues with your kids right now, if you want to help kids, help their mental health, give them a creative outlet, be it music, or sculpture, or paintings, or photography, you've got it all around you. It's very important, and it's very important that they have a well-rounded development early. Catch them before they get to Franklin High. Give them a chance to learn a little bit sooner, that way they're more prepared when they hit college. I can speak from experience, I've been K through twelve through this county. They need art. Thank you.
Motion that we, as there's a public comment here, we take a motion to that.
So moved, Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, thank you all very much. We'll be moving on with the agenda. We'll be moving on with the agenda. Move probably a whole round, about 30 seconds or so so if you all some of your need to leave or wanted to leave. But you're welcome to stay for the rest of the agenda. Okay, we're at the additions to the agenda. Is there anything we need to add to the agenda?
Let's see. Mr. Chairman, I would like to add
Where we're going with what?
We're going to new business 14A.
14 what?
D. Discussion of county property that needs a media attention.
14B?
14B.
Can I share that topic with you?
It is discussion of lottery. Over pay.
Mentioned lottery?
Yes.
You got an addition to agenda? Just to to the agenda.
Yeah. Go ahead, Tim.
I'm sorry. So I have an addition to the agenda as well, which will be 14E under new business. It will be declaration of sheriff's department's service weapon to be declared as surplus property.
I'm putting your surfer's on me or what am I saying?
It's a service weapon to be declared as surplus property.
Mr. Shields, if we could please remove item number 14A from the agenda. And also, I think that our auditor is with us here tonight and they have traveled from Charlotte. If we could put them up in the the front of the 14 presentations I think Ms. Vane was needing to get back to Charlotte tonight. So that will just be a simple for our fiscal year audit there at A on reports and presentations and move the opioid funding meeting to B.
Who's the
Just a switch.
Okay. Anything else? That's all we have tonight, I've made a poor indication resolution. We have no plan B?
We will need a closed session for each of our developing purposes.
Okay.
And I will defer to the attorney to decide that statue.
Since we heard the presentation for this, Will, are we still going to have a conversation about 12D now? It's the 14th year's resolution?
You want to put that at 12D?
We have it that.
Okay. Well, it's not on here now, but we can add it if you would like to.
No, but I believe I saw it somewhere else.
14C.
14C is our resolution that we presented that was tabled from the last month. The school board did send the county a separate resolution that opposes that. So if you want to make that, if you would like them, they are here tonight. I think the chairman and Ms. Wilks are here. She did read the resolution into the record. If you would like to give them, if they would like further opportunity to comment on that, you can certainly add it.
Okay, I'll hold on that to 12D when we come to it.
Okay, so we'll add 12D. And that is
Education Resolution.
Opposing opposing partnership. Yes.
Of education selection. Let's free, let me give you another chance for us to comment on that if you want to in a few minutes.
That'd be fine, Mr. Chair.
All right. We approved the adjustments and those type of things.
Unless anybody else has anything to add.
If we're familiar with adjustments, if we can move number 16, that point is I'm not seeing the possibility to change that. Let's say it's the liaison for the library. Can you go back to the next one?
Do you remember what I was talking about?
I suppose you have documents for the library to make sure.
If you can get a consensus of the board to table that for the next one since the liaison cannot be absent at that time, that's fine.
Let me ask you this. Since this has been delaying quite often, can we move that? So he can address that? You have an obligation, huh? We have a obligation. It's been delaying last month.
So do we just choose from that one application? Can we go back and choose also the other applications from March or until previous?
The only one I saw was one thing in March.
And that was the new, that was the new application?
And that was sent by directly as their selection, their recommendation.
Well, we still have a pool of candidates from the original appointments that we did back in March. Can we not go from the status of candidates as well?
I think you can choose any candidate that you all want. As the board, you're in charge of selecting the board members. I think that's your call.
Okay, I think you, in that vein, I think if that's, if we wanted to consider the that pool, it would make sense to table this and get, put all those applications back in for consideration.
Because that's what you're saying, D. Maybe we'll have a chance to go through that list and pick who else you would like to point to.
Yes, sir. So I think, Mr. Shields, I think if you have a consensus of the board that this can be tabled, I think that's fine. Or you can act on the consensus and we'll just when we get there, we'll skip through it.
I'm making this a little perception sometimes. We're keeping and moving things without addressing the things. We keep delaying. So can we say we will do this in the next meeting in June, January?
It's not my call.
Yeah, I think you do it. We can pass it back to me. We got to make the decision.
I think this is the first time on for this one, if I'm not mistaken. We've had prior ones, but I think this is the first time on on in you.
The reason for this is because we have one new application. So I don't believe that the entire board is aware of the other applicants as well. So to do just a vote tonight just based on that one application and then other candidates that were actually also in the same pool that the board is not aware of, I think we need to get all the votes together so we have better choice.
Do you have a recommendation for us? And can we
Sure.
I can do that.
Sure. I would like to look at the county manager.
You have to bring your recommendation to the board here.
Sure.
Okay. So what do we just do?
We tabled this.
Page 16.
Yeah. You have a consensus.
Now, I mean, if you have curiosity, can you bring us any recommendations or slowdowns? Or is it will be a two or three people that we have to vote on? You're the latest on, can you bring us a person's name?
Or do you want me to just make a recommendation? Would you like us to have enough to vote based on the candidates?
How many candidates do you have?
There was a good number of applicants for that first seat. We'll have to go back and look.
There's only one March meeting, so maybe I have
And you also do my ballot, so it's all those
All those names that run
All those names that run by.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Harrison is here. She is our local librarian. And maybe she can shed some light on this. Would you like to approach the podium, Ms. Harrison?
Good evening. I just wanted to give a little more context to that nomination. Per the bylaws of the Macon County Public Library, two positions of trustees have to come from the board of the Hudson Library. The Hudson Library in Highlands has its own board because they own their own building and they are a non-profit. So two, and that's stated in the bylaws. So we have two positions from that board. One of them is empty, vacant, excuse me. The person who has applied for a wing is currently the chair of that board.
Which bylaws is it?
The Macon County Public Library bylaws. Did submit in the packet with her application, I believe, those bylaws.
Since that means we cannot make a selection from the candidates from March?
For that particular position, it has to come from that board. However, we do have another opening that is coming up in February. And that would be open to any selection.
So that person is related to the Hudson library in Holland?
They have their own board. And they per the bylaws, that's just the way that they're written. Two positions on the trustees from Macon Library are to be from that board.
And that was a recommendation to this board?
So they, that board, they are notified that there is an opening. They choose among themselves their nominee. And that is the application that I presented, so.
So that's the only name that we can basically choose from? Is that what you're telling me?
That was their nomination from their board. That was the person that they chose to nominate.
So that's the only name that we can shoot, basically choose?
If you would like me to request that they nominate an additional person, I'm happy to take that.
Yes.
Okay.
President Curran. President Curran. Thank you, Harris. Public Library Board. Bylaws. They recommend two from the Hudson Library just to be amended. And it would be the library board.
I made it by my own board?
By the library board. Now that'd be a tough case for me. Next month, if we sort through this, if we want to table it, we sort through this.
Yeah, let's table it because we can go through this. I think we have some time with House.
Then we take whatever. But if there's some discussion on it, maybe a further discussion or clarification.
Just run that over, yeah?
I'm not, tabling it would be fine. And then we can I mean, I think tabling is a fine decision. And then again, you can decide next month.
I'll just deny that the
I understand it's a consensus.
Oh, we mix it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
You're really fine.
That's number you gave there one piece of advice. Tell your chairman, I said, don't ever lose your agenda. I've had a couple of times, you're like a cat on a hot tin roof.
I've got it, yeah.
I'll second that motion really well.
Number 11. Number 22. Number 22. Any more discussion? Put the room next, next, uh, January 2nd, right? The one to do with Holland.
We just consensus.
Consensus, we're not going to discuss it tonight.
Number 11. We got a second, we got a time work program. We can go into the forward presentation. Power for vote for approval of the agenda. My question approved agenda as presented.
Mr. Scott, I would like to motion on board, second.
All right, number 22. Put them on the agenda. So we got approval.
So just to clarify on records, Mr. Anderson, a discussion by the library has been tabled by consensus. So Mr. Pigden made a motion to approve the agenda with all the corrections we just made. I second the motion. Now we're in the face of discussion. You can call any question.
Any more discussion? Call with questions, vote. I continue on with the forward presentation.
Oh, nice time.
Did I have you a two minutes? Come on, bud.
Good evening. My name is Jill Lang and I'm from Martin Starms and Associates. And I am here to present the 2023 audited financial statements. The audit report has been submitted to the local government commission and we are waiting approval from them. I want to begin with some audit highlights. We issued an unmodified opinion, which means that the financial statements are fairly presented, all material respects in conformity with GAAP. This year, as part of the single audit reporting, we tested four major programs, which was the Medicaid, the formula grants for rural areas, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, and the state aid to airport program. And this year, GASP 96 was implemented. It's a new standard in fiscal year '23 for the subscriptions based information technology arrangements. And performance indicators, which we will discuss at the end of the slideshows about performance indicators and self-reporting to the local government commission. This slide shows the total fund balance in the general fund over the past three years. Total fund balance increased 7.6 million or about 17.4% from '22 to '23. Increase in the fund balance Increase in the fund balance over prior year. With that seventeen point four percent, total revenues exceeded expenditures by eight point one million. But after other financing sources and uses, like your leases and your subscription liabilities issued of six hundred forty-eight thousand, there are also transfers in of two million, transfers out of three million. This left the general fund with an increase in fund balance of seven point six million dollars. This slide shows the available fund balance in the general fund. Available fund balance is the calculation utilized as the basis for comparing you to other units in calculating your fund balance percentage. In two thousand twenty-three, the available fund balance was at forty-six point, forty-five point six million, which is an increase from prior year of about seven point two million. This slide shows the available fund balance plus the debt service fund balance as a percentage of net expenditures. In two thousand twenty-three, it was at eighty-three point two five percent. The, the county's, um, LGC has a minimum fund balance percentage of twenty percent with units with general fund expenditures below a hundred million dollars. Average of similar units are at thirty-nine percent, and the county is above the minimum. This slide shows the general fund revenues and expenditures comparing two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. Uh, note that these numbers do not include other financing sources and uses such as transfers, leases, um, and subscription liabilities issued. Revenues increased by about eight point two four percent, which is about five million dollars from prior year, and increases were noted in the local option sales tax, interest earnings, and restricted intergovernmental revenues. Expenditures increased by about eleven point three percent, about five point nine million dollars. And we saw increases in, uh, various departments like the general government, public safety, transportation, and human services. This slide shows the revenue sources in the general fund. The top three revenue sources were Adelorean taxes at fifty-two percent, restricted intergovernmental at fourteen percent, and local option sales tax in twenty-two percent. And then you have your other revenues that makes up twelve percent that's listed on the side there. And we're going to look at the top three revenues in the next few slides. Adelorean taxes increased by about five hundred and eight thousand dollars, or one point five percent, and that was very comparable to prior year. Restricted intergovernmental revenues increased five hundred forty-one thousand, or about six point two percent. And that was noted with increases in the federal and state grants and local health and social services revenues. Local option sales tax increased by about one point seven million dollars, or thirteen point four percent. Increase, the increases were in taxable sales and purchases within the county. This slide shows expenditures in the general fund. The top three expenditures were in public safety at thirty-one percent, human services at twenty-two percent, education at twenty percent. The top three makes up seventy-two point six four percent of total expenditures. And we'll also look at the top three in these slides. Public safety expenditures increased by about one million dollars, or six point three percent, due to increases in salaries and benefits. Human service expenditures increased by about eight hundred forty-eight thousand, or seven point three percent, due to increases in health programs across the board. Education expenditures increased by one point three million, or about twelve point two percent. And that was noted due to public schools capital outlay expenditures. This slide shows an overview of the solid waste fund. Cash increased by about seven hundred ninety-two thousand, or at five point seven percent from prior year. GAAP net income, actually GAAP net loss, when we're looking at the loss here, the loss increased mainly due to increases in the landfill closure and post-closure care, and that's related to the full accrual adjustment of the liability. Cash basis net income does not include items such as depreciation, changes in the post-closure costs, other post-employment benefits, but they do include your capital outlays expenditures and your debt service payments. And it is lower, the current year is lower than the prior year due to increases in operating expenditures in the current year. Cash flow from operations decreased due to increases paid, cash paid for goods and services and to employees for services. And the cash net position decreased, and that's a direct effect from the GAAP net income. Net loss, I'm sorry. GAAP net loss, loss. Now we're going to look at some performance indicators. Along with the submission of the audit report to the local government commission, we are also required to complete a data input sheet with various, with various financial information. Lori reviews and certifies this template to be submitted. This template analyzes the data and provides results as performance indicators to the LGC. Performance indicators ranges from deficit fund balance, statutory violations, or significant findings. The board is required to do self-reporting. They are no longer sending out unit letters. Within sixty days of this presentation, the board must issue a written response to the above, um, item with explanations and or corrective action plans. The correspondence must be signed by board members, county managers, and finance directors. There are, the findings that we had this year are related to the compliance testing, which is the major programs that we've tested. And there were three compliance findings in the two thousand twenty-three audit report. The first one is related to the DSS cross-cutting enterprise program integrity. The second finding is related to the Medicaid program eligibility requirements. The third finding is related to the rural areas and tribal transit program, and that's in the program income requirements. And there are details for the findings in the compliance section of the audit report. Now we're going to look at some positive performance indicators that are noted on the data input sheet. The audit report was timely submitted to the LGC. As discussed earlier, the county's general fund fund balance available, including the debt service fund balance at, for two thousand twenty-three, was at eighty-three point two percent, and it was above the LGC's minimum. And the county also has a stable property tax collection percentage at ninety-eight point eight one percent. I want to thank you for allowing us to serve as your auditors, and we look forward to working with you guys in years to come, and thank you for this time.
Hey, I've got one quick question this time while you're here. I could ask a bunch of them, but on a budget of this scale, twenty percent education, thirty-one percent public safety, are those numbers proportional to what you see, you know, both are originally, nationally?
I don't have information like that with me. I can look on the LGC's website, because they do have, um, percentages out there that's comparable to units. I can see what they have out there, and I can send you the link, or I can send it to Lori, and she can forward it to you. And they probably won't have two thousand twenty-three yet because they're just wrapping up the two thousand twenty-three stuff. It's going to be like more two thousand twenty-two stuff.
Thank you.
See, Russ.
Yes, uh, thank you for sure. While Russ is coming up with us, I would just like to announce that, this, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, at this time, we'll declare this our annual opioid funding meeting. We've talked a lot about the opioid funds and the funding that we have received. We haven't, however, got into how we're going to be using those funds. And as we'll see here, not many counties across the state have. And the Southwestern Commission has taken, as it always does, a lead in this region with respect to helping our seven western counties decide how to regionally use these funds a, as we begin on this road. Section E four of the MOA between the state of North Carolina and Macon County, we are to have this annual meeting related to the settlement of opioid litigation and how we're going to use those proceeds. Apart, in addition to Russ, the town of Highlands, as well as the town of Franklin, were invited to this meeting. Do we have any representatives from either of those bodies here tonight? We have invited them for their input on the opioid planning process, so they are not here tonight. Lori has some information that you, that she will pass out to you right now on opioid funding that has been received to date by Macon County. We have not yet spent those funds. We, and Lori, if you would like to go over and just go over with the board, the funding we received to date?
Sure. So what, what's passing around to you lays out, we're expected to have a little over five point four million over an eighteen-year period. Of course, for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we did receive a three hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars listed there in that chart. And that actually includes the, there were some right at the end of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two that came in, so it is included in that number. Also, this current fiscal year, we're expected to get seven hundred sixty-six thousand, seven dollars. We have received two hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-one dollars and ninety-eight cent. So we're still anticipating additional five hundred forty-one thousand, three seventy-five oh three before the end of fiscal year. And I looked on the site today, the, this was last updated November second. And the site, uh, sorry, I didn't bring that website link, but I can email it to all of y'all if you're interested. But this changes continually. Uh, but that was again last updated November second, but the site mentioned that, you know, the payments that's been received, they kind of knew when they were coming, but the remaining five hundred forty-one thousand, there was no guidance on when we should expect those, but again, hopefully they should come before June thirty. And then on the, the one page that you got handed out there, you can see from fiscal twenty-five through fiscal thirty-nine, you know, we're receiving various payments. As of November thirtieth, we have received six hundred fourteen thousand, three hundred fifty dollars, ninety-nine cent year-to-date, or I mean, total to date. We've also earned twenty-three thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-six cents interest on that. So sitting in the bank right now for opioid settlement, we have six hundred thirty-eight thousand, eighty-four dollars and forty-five cent.
Thank you, Lori, and, uh, just what happens with that money? That money goes into a special, um, revenue fund that we have established. This funding cannot be spent until the county passes a resolution indicating how they want to spend the funds. That is also spelled out in the memorandum of agreement that we signed with the state of North Carolina, section E six. As I mentioned earlier, we're, we're still late, we're still early in the game. We'll be receiving this funding over the course of eighteen years. Not many counties across the state have chosen how they wish to spend this money. At this time, there's forty-seven counties that have passed single or multiple resolutions indicating how they wish to spend the funds. So every project, every time you spend a chunk of these funds, you have to, you have to adopt a resolution that spells that out and, and that, that we have available. So we have not done that at this time, as you can see. Again, not many have. Forty-six counties have chosen option A that, of these forty-seven, that have passed these resolutions, and four have chosen option B. And again, a county can choose multiple, um, has to do multiple resolutions anytime a, a new project is, is being used from these funds. So that's why that number does a total. Option A, now there's two major differences between options, or there's one major difference between option A and option B. Option A, no strategic planning is required before these funds can be expended. Simply, we just have to have this annual meeting, and we have to pass a resolution prior to spending these funds, as I've outlined. These can be used for reentry programs, addition for treatment of incarcerated persons, criminal justice diversion programs, recovery support, early intervention, and the list goes on. Option B, a little bit more cumbersome and a little bit more detailed. There's a little bit more strategic planning involved, some steps you got to take, um, some boxes you got to check that you do not have to do with the option A method. And these include opioid activities that are associated with treatment, prevention, and other activities as well. So before we can spend these funds that, that we receive, and they sit in a special revenue fund, they, they continue to accrue interest over the next eighteen years, we would have to pass a resolution indicating what option that we chose, and we would have to specify what program and how we were going to spend those funds. So, uh, right now, again, we're in the planning phase. The Southwestern Commission is taking the lead on that. And we're pleased to have with us here tonight, uh, Brother Russ Harris from the Southwestern Commission. And, uh, he's going to tell you a little bit about their planning efforts and, and how that fits into what we're doing here in the region. So thank you, Russ.
Thanks, Mr. Brogan, and commission is good to be with you here tonight. Uh, so across the seven counties that we serve, local governments are receiving about twenty million dollars, or twenty-nine million dollars over that eighteen-year period. And even though County Manager Brogan said, if you choose option A, you're going to do strategic planning, when this funding started coming, a lot of local governments began getting a lot of requests from people that had ideas for how they could spend that money. And so most of the counties here in the West kind of took a pause at that point, and even if they weren't required to do a strategic plan, wanted to do one because it would give them a framework to make the best decisions, that would have the best impact in their communities. About sixteen months ago, we started, a couple of counties reached out and said, well, why don't we just do a regional planning effort, um, as a group? And then shortly after that, Swin County reached out, and they'd received some funding from Dogwood Health Trust to do the planning, and they asked if they could transfer those funds to us, and we could do a regional plan instead of them doing a local plan themselves. And a couple of reasons for doing a regional plan. Um, number one, if the whole region, if all the counties were going to be planning, it didn't make sense for everybody to be working in parallel to one another, using up staff time. So it was felt that it could be more efficient if we did one plan as a region. It also gives us an opportunity to look for, you know, opportunities for alignment. There may be issues that we can all pitch in together as a region, whether it's a treatment facility, or it just may be things like if you've got a jail program, and you've got people that are getting treatment in jail, you need some kind of case management when they come out to help follow up with them. You may not need your own position. There may be an opportunity to share positions with other counties that are doing similar things. Um, and then the other opportunity, or the other reason to do a regional, uh, project is just sharing your best practices. And so we had the first meeting, um, about fourteen months ago, we brought county staff together, and even sitting in that room, there was interest in the Macon County jail program, and the things you all were doing, um, there from some of the other counties want to learn more about that. So working regionally gives us the chance to learn from one another. So we brought together county staff just to confirm that everybody wanted to move forward with this project, and then we released a request for proposals last winter. And we ended up choosing a company called Omni Institute to lead this effort. And we kicked off that effort last June. So we brought together county staff again, just to say, look, here's the plan. Does this meet your needs? Is this what, you know, you want to do, and what the success looked like for you all at the end of this process? After that, they moved into data collection. You all have, um, a dashboard in front of you that I handed out downstairs. And that was from Macon County, and it kind of shows the current situation in Macon County. The first page shows, um, you know, ER visits, opioid deaths, some of that stuff. The backside kind of shows demographics that are related to risk factors. And one in particular that's of interest there, there's a box on the right-hand side halfway down that shows how an aging population kind of contributes to this issue, or how that's affected by this issue, which is pertinent to us because we are the fastest aging region in the state of North Carolina. So that's extremely relevant. Once they did those dashboards, they moved into stakeholder input, which we're still in the middle of that process right now. They've done thirty-three focus group interviews. They've done thirteen one-on-one interviews, and right now we've got surveys out. You all should have received an email from me this morning with a link to that survey. If you did not, um, please reach out to me or anybody else in the public that would like to take that survey and give input. We'd love to hear from you. My email is russ@regiona.org, and you can just email me, and I will shoot you that link. If you want to share that with folks you know in the community that should give input, please do that. Today, we've got about seventy responses to that survey, and it'll close December twenty-second. We expect to have a draft of this plan in February, and I think one thing that's We expect to have a draft of this plan in February, and I think one thing that's important to know with this is, the plan starts from the county level and goes up. So if a county doesn't have a plan, they're going to take the input they got, like with Macon County, create a Macon County-level plan for you all to see, and then take that and kind of feed it up to the regional level. So it's not coming from the regional level down to the counties, but the other way around. And all implementation decisions will absolutely be made at the local level. Once they complete that draft, then they will start working on implementation plan, which just means they're looking at other funding opportunities out there. So if you decide on a plan of attack and what you want to do, they will be able to show other funding sources, so you're not spending all of your settlement funds on that, but there may be other opportunities to leverage those funds to have more impact in your community. And then also, we'll have an evaluation piece to that as well. With it being out over 18 years, we expect the situation to change over time, so we want to have a framework to come back in five years, or eight years, or whatever it is, look at this, find out what's working, what's not, and make adjustments if we need to. And then we expect the final product to be completed and delivered next year. And with that, I'll take any questions you have. If I don't have any answers, I'll get back to you.
Any questions? Russ? Russ, thank you. And just to highlight, the Southwestern Commission, they're a tremendous resource. Again, they've taken the lead on this here tonight. We also have the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners who have numerous sources of information for us. They have sample resolutions when we decide to choose an option on which direction we're going. We have those sample resolutions. They have interns. They have helped counties in choosing which direction to go and kind of been a mediator in putting this process together. They have interns that are available to assist with those. I've contacted the NCACC about that as we move forward. But for right now, I think, you know, the Southwestern Commission, as Russ was saying, this process that they're undergoing is about to conclude, and it'll conclude in February. And again, this is going to give us a chance, as Russ said, to see how we're aligned regionally, and to hear from many stakeholders that were from Macon County that have been involved in this process, and to be able to more accurately pinpoint the needs that we're having, and like Russ said, make sure we're not duplicating efforts. So I think there's value in letting this money and us just waiting on this process to conclude with the Southwestern Commission. And I think, no matter when we start discussing this, and we get this information back, and we'll have many more tools to make these decisions with, but I think that one thing that I would say in the meetings that we've had is that as far as Macon County goes, we have, we have some of the best local programs that deal with opioid abuse, substance abuse, reentry programs, and detention center. As Russ mentioned, we set the bar across this region in terms of programs like that. There are many great, great local programs that are boots on the ground, that have been actively involved in combating this opioid crisis in Macon County for years. And if there's one thing that is important, as we discuss this moving forward, these local providers need to have a seat at the table. We have such a strong infrastructure in place and an opportunity to use these funds to bolster that infrastructure. People are in the business, they're doing it, they're good at it, and it's working, and it's effective. So I think we need to really look at those local programs and make sure they have a seat at the table.
Derek, with all due respect, what are the percentage that the commissioners will receive out of our opioid?
They're not receiving anything.
Not yet.
Yet.
Not yet.
Right.
But it's one hundred or twenty percent?
No, no, we will not. Our monies, we can spend it however we want to.
Never.
This was funded through another grant, that they're doing all this work for us, and they're going to have, they're going to give us this information and the results of this region-wide study that they're conducting. And then, we have all that money that we can spend to do however we see fit.
Thank you all.
I'm from Scaly Mountain Historical. I'm here. I have some handouts.
I'll get them.
Thank you. Thanks, man. I'm Bill Perkman. I live in Scaly Mountain and have been a part of the community for a long time. I am president of the Historical Society. We own the community building and maintain it and all the property around. Darren Gillett's here with me, and he is president of the Community Association. So we're here to tell you a little bit about the building itself. It was built in 1899, was a schoolhouse from 1900 to 1957, became a number of things. And then 2008, we redid it, updated it, restored it, and preserved it. We own it and maintain it, and we are all volunteers, all of us that work on it or are involved in it are volunteers. Through your support with getting broadband internet into Scaly Mountain, one of the locations it came to was this building. And so we have fiber, high-speed fiber internet there with Wi-Fi capabilities. I'm also part of the Little T Broadband Organization, and so Little T funded putting that Wi-Fi out there and making sure that it's always available. It is really the only source of internet for a lot of our residents, for some students. And we fund that service, make sure that it is free, available to all, any resident that wants to. And so we maintain that and pay for that. It is because we don't have really good cell service in the area, it is also where people go to make phone calls and use that for that purpose as well. We have a playground that we've installed, and it really is the only recreation facility within 10 miles. It has a lighted basketball court. We put a fence around the playground area, so, you know, you can put your kids in there and let them run around and not worry about that. There's a creekside picnic area. We put tables in there, and there's a grill. We, the river itself, or the creek itself, has a nice little waiting area for kids and families to play in, and it's busy often. We do have installed a portage on at all times, so it's outside, so they have access to that. When the building's unlocked, they can go inside as well. It is the Community Association Building. We have a lot of functions there throughout the year. It is home to the Scaly Mountain Women's Club, and they do pancake breakfasts there. Come join us in the summer. It's a great, great time together. But they raise funds to give scholarships to local students, so it's also a nonprofit. It is really a great facility. It is used for weddings, family reunions, lots of other events. There's a full kitchen in there, a bathroom, and it is the point where the school buses pick up as well. It is one of the last remaining restored historic buildings in Macon County, and it was a school, so we believe strongly in maintaining that commitment to education. So what we're asking for is, you all generously provide us some money every year to help maintain, really, just help us keep the lawn updated and things like that. It's gotten to a point where the building itself needs a lot of work. We raised a number of, about $25,000 this year to fix the building itself. It was rotten wood, and there was a lot of, a lot of things that needed to be done, and so we've done that. But there's still a number of other things that need to be done. And so we're asking for some real important maintenance, structural things. We found mold, as I expect you probably find in every building you go around here, but it, but it needs to be addressed. And there's no HVAC system, so it's really difficult to use the system, to use the facility in the winter. And it was built with local materials 125 years ago, and so we're asking for an immediate $20,000 to help us just maintain some of these things, and really get the building up so we can use it even more and use it in the winter. And then in 2008, the county granted us $5,000 a year when we redid the building and restored it, and that's really the reason we're able to even keep it up. It's a big part of what, and our costs keep increasing, and so we're asking that you increase that to $10,000 a year. And I just want to thank you all.
Does it spot work? I mean, would it be a little bit longer there?
We have, it's available. We have some parking spaces, and people, you'll see people sitting in their cars.
Is it behind or up front?
Yes, mostly out front. There is some ability to get behind it as well. So if, if you need access, handicap access, then you can come behind the building, and we have a place to park, and you can get in that way. And there's porches, and we have tables outside, so there's a lot of space outside for them to use it. And if, somebody will reserve it. We have a lot of people who work from home or have a big important meeting, and this is a very reliable internet service, so we will open it up for them and provide it for that.
But it's not password-protected?
No, yeah, it's wide open. There's no password for the internet, so anybody can.
So anyone who parks in the parking lot would have access to it.
Hey, that's what's needed in there.
But if there is, if there's someone who is maybe working remotely, and they do need a password-protected portion of the Wi-Fi, we provide that as well. So if, if security concerns, you know, are with a company and they're trying to, then we can't allow them access with a password-protected VPN service as well, so.
Yeah, it's a great service.
When you say we get $20,000, what kind of timeframe are we talking about?
We're continuing, some privacy here? That would be great. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I met with this group a few months back and was quite impressed with all the activities that we have with this historical building and with the kids going there, doing homework and stuff like that, with no reliable heat source. All the activities that they have in this is a very well-used community center. And, and I believe Scaly Mountain don't really ask for a whole lot of stuff, and as you see, most of that work on the picture of this, this building, the work that they have done and followed here. If you haven't seen it, you should go, you should go check it out, because it's quite impressive. And understanding their needs as far as heat and help with that, I'd like to make a motion tonight that we can grant you under $20,000 to help with this HVAC system and, and the needs of this building for the community. So?
Say.
Can I?
Let's go.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm curious. So you mentioned HVAC, maybe I missed that in the presentation. So you have like an itemized list of the repairs that are needed to pull the cord, and in the past, previous boards have given money to other organizations to maybe renovate and, you know, get them up to par, but we've done it on a reimbursement basis, instead of just saying, here's $20,000. You know, it's more that you get the repairs done, you have received invoices, you turn them into me in finance, we cut you a check. Is that palatable? And like I said, back to my first part, you know, you have kind of an itemized list before we would get started, and these are the repairs we.
There's a number, and I'm, yes, there's a number of repairs that we need, and they do exceed this amount. I'm trying to find some other funds in the community, and we have, we have a great, great community in there. They've been very generous, generous so far. There's an HVAC system, there just isn't one really. So that's gonna be probably about $13,000, $14,000, I believe, to get it installed. We have had a home inspection person come out, and that's about the mold. We don't have access to underneath, so we're not 100% sure what all that's going to take to address that, how much money or whatever. But needs, need some underlayment and some other things like that. The water heater leaks, we have to turn it off when we don't use it, so it really needs to be replaced, and.
We want to put in an on-demand so that it's not constantly heating water that's no one is using, so.
The, the front of the building has a pretty steep grade, and people often are walking up the drive, there's a little driveway path for the back of the building. That's where a lot of people end up walking, and we've had some people fall, and we need to put some stairs there, put some railings, make sure it's really safe. Our parking is, needs some real improvements. There's just a number of things like that. We want to make sure that the inside, that it is really better office space, and maybe perhaps that multiple people can be there and there at once, and so there's improvements that way. The fence around the playground needs some updates, lots, lots of things. Yes, we have a list.
Let me ask you a couple quick questions, Phil Martin. Been on Scaly Mountain my whole life, I'm trying to place with this building, yes, is that on Bucknoll, but soon you turn on the right?
Yes.
I thought that was a church my whole life.
It was a church at one point, Methodist Church for a number of years.
I guess that's just one I want to make, is I feel like I don't really see it being like open to me and my family pulling in there and using the creek and the basketball court and the internet. I love that, I mean, cell phone service right there. The only place I get a cell phone service right now on Scaly Mountain is Hale Ridge and Park Park. So I just feel like this thing kind of fits in our community funding pool allocation, and we run a budget, and we have these items set aside in my own, and I'm thinking that way, so I just feel like I want to support this thing, I just feel like I want to take the more principal route and kind of stick it in line with our community funding pool. I think that's where this fund, this funding should come from, like it's all worthy. But I would also encourage you, if this is going to be a contribution, like actually maybe to open it up for people in the community, I understand. Please, please.
That's great advice. I really appreciate that. It's one of the most important things to me, is to make sure everybody in the community knows about it. We try hard. I think some of our challenges and some of where we want to spend a little bit of money is landscaping, when in 2008 it was planted, there were some nice trees spread about. They've all grown up so much you don't see it from the dillard row. And it's right there, and you just don't notice it as much. So we need to trim those up a little bit and make it more available.
I'll go and recruit volunteers and labor and time to help you do that.
Thank you.
I'm serious. That's genuine, but I just feel like it's just one of those principal items, and I'll take it for granted.
Yeah, sure. No, I, and it is available, it is available to everybody, it is used a good amount, and we had a work day with council volunteers about a month ago. Thank you.
And just to remind the Commissioners, each year we do approve an agreement to provide recreation opportunities. This board approves that in the amount of $5,000. The Scaly Mountain Historical Society has to sign that agreement, and the agreement does lay out that they have to, you know, make it available to the public, you know, in reasonable days, reasonable hours, so we do have that in place right now. And again, it's in our budget on a annual basis for $5,000.
Is this proposed to be re-done or one time?
The $20,000, I think, is one time.
There was two parts of what I was asking for on here. One is that we need, we just need to address the building itself and some of these mortgage things, and that's the $20,000 that we're asking for. And then, yes, I'm very appreciative of the $5,000. It is a big part of what allows us to do some of the things we do. Our, it's been that way since 2008, and we'd like to increase that to $10,000 on a monthly basis.
So that may be something at budget time. They always send a request, so budget time is something you can consider if you wanted to change a part of the town, and, you know, update that recreation agreement. Again, you have got two separate issues here, the one time $20,000 pass, and then the access to increase, which would be, you know, looking at this community.
If you want to.
No, I mean, if you approve it tonight, I would recommend taking it from contingency, the $20,000. I think right now we have a motion on the board, and the Labor Department, so might be a discussion, but yes, if you approved it tonight, it would come out of county contingency matters. And like I said, my preference is that they give the work done, turn in receipts, and we reimburse them. That's what we've done with other buildings.
Not to exceed this $20,000.
Not to exceed, to get very much of it.
It's okay, you can do the right thing.
Because that's what we've done with other agencies that prior boards have given money to kind of get them up to par and get around the standards so the community can use them.
And we're assisting now in Haley, in a community club, library, construction project over there. Broadband's going to be up, it's going to be possible for the community. So this is, this is directly benefiting the residents of Scaly Mountain.
It does.
Yeah, and there's some work you need to do on that hand. Yeah. And there's some work you need to do on that handicap ramp, I think, that is called, or that.
Yes.
It's a little tight back there and.
Right.
All in part of time. So, but not to exceed $20,000, I guess. Is that, is that satisfactory with everybody?
That'd be great. Yes.
General budgeting, yes. You need a budget amendment for $20,000 to the general budget.
Just like she said. Then y'all get together on the paperwork.
Yeah, you guys have my email.
Yes, yes, we do.
So yes, that is the motion.
Both?
Four more down there. I hope you guys can come down here and show us how to save a 125-year-old building.
Absolutely.
Take some of it.
Takes the whole community.
Thank y'all. That's, that's an asset that could be added to the county.
Thank you.
I'll take it.
Thank you very much.
We got this one down.
Thank you.
All the public? Four more. We put over on the, uh, we put a half this week up here on this, uh, on the, you know, the, uh, we confirmed that they had a resolution, uh, a resolution regarding the partisan board identification election, uh, in the, uh.
He's, he's addressing now.
Okay. The last one you, uh, we all know, the resolution.
Yes, sir.
We all know. Okay.
I think the resolution, Hillary did a wonderful job addressing y'all in terms of the content of the resolution. So we do appreciate this opportunity to delve into it a little bit deeper. Um, as hard as it is for me to believe, I've been up in the Horvitz case for 15 years. Uh, let me note, I think that's what I'm saying. And I'm very proud of our board. I think we always follow the creed that we have in our, in our meeting hall, which says, "In the best interest of the students." And that is what drives us. It's our whole, it's our goal. That's what we want to get to. I also think y'all have heard from me enough. I think it's time that you also listen to two other members of our, of our board. First, I want to introduce, I don't need to introduce her. Everybody knows Deidre Breeden. Deidre's our newest member. She's just now finishing her first year. And in this to say, she's been a great asset to our board. So without further ado, Deidre, if you would.
Thank you. Hi, two meetings in a row. What an honor. Um, so I make a career out of listening to people. And not just listening, I seek to understand where they're coming from. And that's a lot of different forms of views. And I've had a lot of discussions lately from people that support both sides of this issue. And I do believe that there are good intentions behind both sides of this issue. Those who believe that the school board needs to be partisan, the ones that I've had discussions with at least, are coming from a place of wanting transparency and wanting to encourage voters who don't necessarily take the time to educate themselves on particular individual stances, maybe where they're coming from. Because if their party affiliation is clear, then maybe that will tell them a little bit more about what the person stands for. But in contrast to that, and what I have really learned over the last year is that it's super important for, which all of you know, and all voters, I hope take this to heart as well, it's really important to get to know your candidates on a personal level, what they stand for. Because as I've said a lot of times, while I was running and campaigning for office, I'm not a politician. Don't call me that. You know, I may identify with the Republican Party, but I'm not a politician. Because who I identify as, number one, is a follower of Christ, a wife, and a mom. And that's, I mean, that is what leads how I vote and the things that I stand for. And all of us on our board have similar things that motivate us. And it's not a D or an R or an I. Um, then there are people who, from the other side, who do not support this being a partisan race for that very issue. They want you to get to know the candidates. And then some might argue, in contrast to that, that the climate that we live in today is a very politically charged climate. And I think that's kind of an undeniable truth that we all have to accept. The grass is green, the sky is blue, and this is a politically charged world. So people want to know. Okay. But here's where my issue with this whole concept comes. When I first got notified last month that this was on your agenda, I took a pause and I said, okay, is Nana Haley on the agenda? No. What about the middle school track? No. Okay. Um, those are the issues that over the last year, I keep a running list of in my phone and a little red book that I carry around. The, the voters are reaching out to me with their concerns. All the things that I'm learning is all of these real-time issues that impact our students, our teachers, our staff, our families. Those are the things that I want to see discussed between our two boards. Now, over the last two months and four meetings between the two of our boards, we have spent time talking about this partisan issue. And some of the things that I have really been trying to get done over the last year have not gotten that much time. And that's a little frustrating. So what I would ask for you, um, and I do, I appreciate you, I'm not complaining about taking a second meeting or a second month to address this issue. But what I would like to say is I want you to, I appreciate it, but I want you to consider, and this is just a gentle reminder, you know, some of your constituents have expressed their opinion on this issue. But as, as the board, the five of us are also citizens of Macon County. And we have come together with a stance on this issue. And I just want to gently and respectfully ask that you acknowledge that with any action that you decide to take tonight.
Thank you, Deidre. How's Ms. Wilkes? I typically tell her to indulge. I think she is, again, she hasn't been on the board quite a long as I have, and Hillary is. And as Deidre, I've learned over 15 years, if you're smart, there's a couple of things to do. If you have someone that speaks better than you do, if they're smarter than you are, you need to step aside and listen. So I think Hillary has represented the Highlands, which Mr. Sherrill is a member of. I think she has also some very important things to say and bring to y'all to help, to consider as you, as you consider your future actions.
Thank you. Um, I feel like the bullet points of the resolution that I read earlier were a great summation of some very thoughtful comments that were given at our school board meeting in November. I, I sat there and, and was the last to speak when we all started talking about this and was struck by how four totally different vantage points were summed up, um, from Mr. Breelove, Ms. Breeden, Ms. Laster, Ms. Evans, and then myself as the fifth. And it just showed me that there's a lot of different ways to look at this. But in my opinion, the bottom line, I do not think that a partisan school board serves our students, our parents, our faculty members, and quite frankly, our board. We operate very well together. We work very hard. We're in meetings with many of you often. Uh, we had one yesterday. Deidre and I are working very hard on Franklin High School project, on the Highlands project, and working very well with our commissioner liaisons. We have time that is spent doing better things than having these conversations. I ask that you please remove the resolution from your, uh, your thoughts. I hope that it doesn't proceed further. I did have comments that I prepared that I did send to you while you've all had a chance to read them. I'm not going to belabor those. I think that, um, to have it presented to us via an agenda and to have to hear of it via a third party, um, and, and then moved on at the last meeting, quite frankly, showed a little bit of disrespect for our board. And I appreciate some of those of you who have reached out to us to, um, share your concern that, that it wasn't approached in the right way. We all need to work together. I think we all are working towards that. And many of us do work together very well. And I think we have a very positive path forward. And we have a county and a school system that we can all be very proud of. And our board needs to continue to function exactly as it does so that we can keep our projects moving forward and, and do the job we were elected to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I said, listen to those that can speak. I don't know if y'all, it's your permission, Mr. Chairman. I think everyone here knows like where I stand. It's, it's very plain and I've, I've never dodged that. I just feel very strongly. As someone says, if it's not broke, why would you try to fix it? It's not broke. It's produced boards that are cohesive. It's produced boards that have one common goal, and that is to take care of the children of our county in the best way that we feel we can and provide an education which is going to give them a leg up in their future. That's all we're about. That's all we want. So having said that, forgive us, I don't know if you, anyone has any questions that we might answer. I would yield to your, uh, things. Mr. Antoine, please.
So it's not a question, but I just wanted to share a couple of things to open with you guys. Um, first, in the spirit of unity and just understanding, I'm a big advocate for getting to talk about things, okay? And I made a comment at our last meeting because of the way this was presented. I felt like there was some more professional courtesy needed in terms of us discussing this, especially because it involves your board. Um, and I have to say, like, in the beginning of this, I was looking at this from one perspective. And my perspective, when I was for the partisanship of this. But honestly, I. I'm going to ring through the resolution. I gotta say, I'm definitely in support of what you all have stated tonight. So I just wanted to, to let you guys understand that, you know, my position has changed because of being able to hear your side of this, which makes really good sense on everything that you guys have presented. So I just wanted to just let you guys know I'm supporting what your position is in all this right now.
Do you think we ought to put that into a motion? In the kind of motions?
Um, well, do we have any other discussions or comments?
Motion.
Say it.
A motion.
Motion for a second. So.
Um, well. Make a motion for one, exactly what I just said. If this supports a resolution regarding the partisan board of education. No. Motion to, uh, cross that partisan issue.
Yes.
Resolution.
Yes.
And that would be on another way. No, he's just made a motion to, to, um, basically deny the resolution.
Just to terminate the, terminate the resolution that was tabled from November, from November meeting.
Correct.
14C.
14C. That's what we're. Now, you made a motion. Have you, do you have a second on it?
Second.
Second. Discussion board discussion.
Mr. Breelove.
Yes, sir.
This is a, um, it sounds like that the school board of Macon County feel like this is a direct attack on you five members. But this is a much bigger picture in the state and national level. If it's not, then why do we have almost half of the school districts in North Carolina going to partisan races? Um, it, it seems like that there is a much bigger problem in education beyond Macon County. So, I mean, a lot of the local, uh, the surrounding counties have adopted this, um, partisan school board, um, as well. Um, in my mind, as I stated before, I think that there should be a primary of the school board candidate. And, um, and it would clear up all this stuff that was brought up tonight as to, um, Republicans, there were two Republicans marked on the Republican sample ballot. That is correct. That's who the Republican Party was promoting. The Democrats had the Democrat marked on their sample ballot handing out. And politics is in every breath that we take. And it just seems like that the five school board members feel like it's a direct attack on their personal being and also what you're doing for the kids. We understand what you're doing for the kids. Who sets the policies above and beyond Macon County school system? That would be the question. That, these policies are handed down to Macon County's school system. And you follow those and you have very limited power when it comes to how the school system actually operates. You know, you, you, um, you guys select the schedule and everything else. I get it. But this is beyond the politics that's embedded into the public school system. And people want to know who they're voting for. Whether it's Democrat, whether it's Republican. That's why they, they went to the judges. The judges are partisan now. And little by little, the school system is going to be the same way. So that's, um, that's my take. Um, this is, um, and changing the subject a little bit, but this right here really goes in the same line as how libraries operate in this state and across this country. That's my take.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Sherrill, did you want me to reply to that or respond?
Please.
Uh, with all due respect, I disagree with your summation that you just had. This Board of Education, I was not worried about national politics. I'm not worried about state politics. And we are playing this like your board does. We have a lot of control of how the school system in Macon County conducts itself, how our curriculum is established, and how we try to do our best for our students to succeed. So we don't care bluntly about national politics. I don't care about state politics. We take what DPI, the Department of Public Instruction tells us, we work within that. But what we are saying is, and I'm not offended by, you know, I hate, I hate that maybe we came across it. We were offended or failed to attack. That's not the case. So if that came across, it was not what our intent was, I assure you. Our goal is to do what is, I'm going to repeat myself, is what is in the best interest of Macon County students, period. That's all we're trying to do. And bluntly, this board, I challenge anyone to find a better board that works as, as well together as the current Board of Education or the past Board of Education I've been part of. I'm very proud of what we've done, very, very proud of. So we just simply collectively as a group, don't want to be involved in national politics. We don't want to be involved in state politics. We don't care about a letter. We want people to understand what we're about. Anyone that wants to join us, as long as they come with that attitude, we welcome them with open arms. It's an election. My seat is up for election. There may be people that don't feel the same way then. If they want to come forward and follow, that's how it works. I welcome them. And they have viewpoints that differ from mine. But it's an election. It's our democracy at work. That's how we operate. But let's don't bring other things into our local scene. Let's just something over there. I don't think it serves any purpose. I think we're doing, I'm starting to get worried about shouldn't you, but I think we're doing heck for you.
And I don't disagree.
Right. Anyone else?
More discussion? All in both, all in favor?
It's Washington's resolution.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
How did you run here?
Uh, I see, you know, under UBS's seat, uh, that'd be, how many of you expect this to happen?
Yes, I think, yes, absolutely. The uh, the motion was to terminate the resolution supporting the identification and party affiliation for candidates for Macon County Board of Education as tabled at the November fourteen Board of Commissioner.
All in favor of my opinion?
All in, all opposed? Sorry. Camera will take your, take it down.
All opposed? I say one up for you. Y'all didn't see all of it, no, but I did.
Chairman, thank you. We are very anxious to work with y'all. I thought this is a board, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Higgins, all of y'all. You are doing the things that you feel are necessary and, Mr. Chairman, especially able to say, you're a manager of committees. I will admit to that. I respect that, you know? I think you do things based on what you truly feel your mission inside the county is, so uh, I don't object, you'll never hear me say anything at first to you about that. But thank you all. That means a lot to us. This is very pleasant, good night.
Dr. Williams, is that you back there? Good to see you. Head Canorex, Sergeant.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Yeah, yeah.
I can tell you, this this original agenda, it'd be, it would look like football coaches like, well, what they need to do is to have the agility. Well, I think we're new, we're well known.
Yeah, but they still, they kind of
And they need a board where they have
Congratulations.
And also here you don't have, so you have all sorts of
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna try and plug the audio back in and we'll see if this is working.
Oh, sorry, I'm in your way.
One's just close.
Isn't it as fancy?
She had a screen, very fancy. As long as it, as long as it's in English, that's the important thing.
Uh, I don't know that you'll see any words.
Uh, it's more visual.
Man, I feel good.
Hopefully it speeds up my conversation. Maybe it's that's why they want to vote.
Throw that, throw that hell very away.
That would be fun.
They have, it's like, as I was telling, it's like football coaches like, where they're moving that year. We, I wrote a quote of that. So, Veterans Battlefield. Some
Testing audio, one, two, three.
So it is in the package. It's online on our website. I don't, no, council.
Means twelve.
So
Early season or late season?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I just think it's
Uh, the motion that excused Commissioner Antoine as due health reasons, uh, is paying to come back to his head, so he needs to excuse himself.
Sir. Do you have a skeletons? All in favor? For me? I believe, uh, I'm the next person. The reason I want this uh, on the uh, adopted date, uh, to review the uh, resolution, adopt the Code of Ethics, or the county's work, which is important to uh, please that again. I saw it was uh, real proof, this was adopted on the fourteenth of March twenty twenty-three. I'd just like to, somebody make a motion to update this as a new date. We stay with everything, but just to put on there that it was reviewed, updated again. I think you got it in the packet. I I think the, when we had some of our meetings, one-on-one, uh, one area that we uh, talked about in the Code of Ethics, and that's number two. Uh, uphold integrity in many departments of board members' office. And uh, that's just something when I looked through it and we spoke in one-on-one, that's what I brought out to you. But our whole, whole thing I'm asking is that we update this, put this date on, that we are uh, still abiding by, uh, somebody could uh, make that into a motion. We'll create a motion.
Chairman, I'd like the next motion to be about the three version of the uh, county Board of Commissioner Code of Ethics.
Well, can you, can you send a file?
Send for twelve, nine, twenty-three.
Say it.
You didn't respect it?
Yes. And uh, and more in discussion over. Scoop, uh, in free love, y'all, if their board of education meeting last night, I saw that they all saw it, updated their code of ethics. I would favor
Mr. Chairman, hold on. You talk about ethics. Um, ethics is a uh, it's pretty broad. Ethics, integrity, honesty, values, truth, trust, sincerity, morality, honor, leadership, respect, loyalty, law-abiding, fairness, and compassion. That's a big headline. And I think it is um, absolutely fit that we as five board members to run this county are able to take every one of these and lean on each other. That's, that's just, that's, that's my take on um, uh, this um, and
And I think it's a guide for us. I just want to bring it back up. I mean, it was a guide. And I think what I'm thinking was number two. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
I just want to ask this for the new room.
I see back there. Discussion in consideration of the Veterans Battlefield from North Carolina County Commissioners Association, Veteran Service Director, May Taylor. And that came out on the video too. Did that come out on the video recently?
Uh, not yet.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Thank you guys for, and ladies, for um, giving me a couple of minutes just to mention this. I've talked to a couple of commissioners already about this um, via email. Um, so the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has partnered with the counties and a company called One Hundred Strong Productions, and they've made a documentary called the Veterans Battlefield. Um, just a little background, North Carolina is home to around seven hundred thousand veterans, the eighth largest veteran population in the nation, and with the fourth largest active-duty military presence nationwide, it stands to reason that our state needs to pay special attention to issues impacting our service members. After active duty, veterans face wide-ranging challenges that can seem insurmountable. Imagine devoting formative years of your career to one tireless pursuit and then everything that you've known comes to a halt and you must invent a new path for yourself. This is the situation that's facing our veterans. From starting new careers to navigating a complex process to obtain earned benefits, shifting mindsets, and establishing homes, it can be just too much for a person to bear. Mental and physical health suffers, unemployment, and even homelessness ensues. Yet, hope and help are alive in our counties. Veteran service officers in our communities are devoted to doing what they can to make life after the military the best it can be for our veterans. As county residents, we all have a role in helping our valued service members. The question is exactly how can we collectively turn the tide on the complicated issues facing veterans? The Veterans Battlefield is the story of our state's veterans who face wide-ranging challenges in their struggle to find purpose and hope acclimating to county life. The Veterans Battlefield highlights these challenges and how county veteran service officers and community leaders are working to support them. So basically, what I'm here to ask you about, um, there's counties all across the state who are um, holding showings of this film. Um, I would like to to have your support in doing that, um, looking at maybe a date, February or March. I know this is Christmas time. There's lots of stuff going on right now. Um, I think it's super important that our community see this and understand how difficult the transition is um, from active-duty military to civilian life, not just that, but once they're in civilian life, how that transition just continues to be difficult. Um, and we have veterans that serve on our board here. Um, it's, it's super important to me because Christie and I are dealing with veterans in and out every day. I mean, we, we, we're not just service officers. We're, we're considered advocates for our veterans and we're social workers and counselors and we're working with no wrong door, finding houses in the sheriff, in the jail, and I mean, our, our reach goes way beyond those office doors. Um, so I just think it's important for our community to know, um, our veterans here in the community and our population. It'll be interesting to see our census because retirees, we have tons of military retirees that have moved to the area. Um, they're very active in the community and I just would really like um, to gather your support in order to to host a showing. Um, I, you know, I'll work out the logistics as far as like performing arts center, fine arts center, whatever it may be, um, that we could do something like this and and with your um, support and we can really advertise and and get a good, good showing. And especially since it's presented by the North Carolina County, uh, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Senator, tell us where, how much it costs.
All right. Uh, it shouldn't be any cost to us, yeah, hopefully, and hopefully we'll get um, you know, the, the location and everything donated. Um, but I really appreciate that and I know our veterans well, just for that recognition.
If you're gonna let this slide, then you did, and I appreciate that. This is...
Thank you.
The homelessness and veterans, the veteran suicide rate, in the general population too, it's just, it's, it's, it's heart-wrenching. And nobody that I've talked to had any solutions, but awareness is the first step, and I think this is a very positive step, and thank you for, for making it all, just tell us, tell us what we can do. No less, just, just tell us.
You got a dream now?
Yes. Yes, sir.
We want you to know for all of it.
Thank you, thank you. And can I just say real quick, as a, a county employee and, and a taxpayer, um, I do appreciate your Code of Ethics that you're gonna, you know, institute and remain to, to follow by at these meetings, because I'm also the vice president for the North Carolina Association of County Veteran Service Officers, which puts me in meetings with people all around the state, you know, um, and I was asked multiple times within the last couple of weeks, you know, what's going on in your county? And when I'm hearing those remarks, and it was embarrassing for me to reply, um, about the, the last meeting, um, so I just want to say that not only as a county employee, but as a taxpayer, I'm glad that, that we're gonna get that behind us, because when I'm asked about that from other counties, it was, it was honestly, it was embarrassing. Um, so I just want to, to say thank you for what you do, and I hope that continues to move forward, and, and, um, super special thanks to our county manager. I worked with Derek when he was an employee just like me, as far as just not, not in any, um, leadership position, and, um, he was just the same then as he is now, and I, for one, really appreciate that. Thank you.
We are very commensurate and respectful, man.
Yes, sir. Integrity, yes, sir. Thank you.
Let's see. Is that George?
Correct, and Joe Allen, um, had, y'all asked Joe Allen to, um, or I'm sorry, Joe Allen requested last month, um, if you all would be interested in relieving yourselves of the duty to approve the release of bonds on the subdivision ordinance. So, chapter one fifty-nine of Mencken County Quota of Ordinances is the subdivision ordinance, and when a developer creates a subdivision, they're required to post a bond for more than the amount that the infrastructure is going to cost. Um, Joe's in charge of figuring out what that is going to be and making sure that you post a bond, but as it was written in the ordinance, it was the commissioners that were in charge of then releasing that bond, um, which was basically just rubber stamping what was Joe, what the information that Joe had, because Joe was the one that approved whether the subdivision was, was completed or not. And so this is just removing, um, that step, the commissioner's approval, and giving that authority to the, um, to the subdivision administrator, which is, you can change Joe, but that's Mr. Joe Allen, um, with the planning department. And so, that, this ordinance then amends that to say, where it previously said Mencken County Commissioners may release a portion or all of the security coaster, um, this then gives that authority to the subdivision administrator, which would of course be, uh, Commissioner Joe Allen. So that's the resolution that's on the table before the board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve directly to change.
Say it. Further discussion? I didn't hear that.
Oh, did you second it, or did you want me to?
Oh, I think I've got my notes here, that's, I'm asking for a second.
I second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I just got anything, that's the next thing to do, we gotta have a second. I thought you did it to me a long ago, but I, I passed on, so, all right, I will. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand.
Motion passes for the video.
Okay, we don't have to, okay, four zero. Let's see. Uh, but A, uh, you business, A, uh...
Remove.
Okay, um... B, we, we have that.
This stuff.
Well, Chris, kind of holding, uh, we used to leave you sit here. You know, we've heard a lot of discussion in our last board meetings, and, uh, you know, we're not polished politicians. I'm a ditch digger, we got a tree cutter, we got a landscaper. If you're looking for polished politicians, you got their own crowds in the period. We take a lot of air, we take a lot of hits, and sometimes our nerves get frayed. I, I mean, y'all know, we run your nerves sometimes, so, once in a while, we're gonna be, it's gonna be a little flare up, you just have to bear with us, that's part of the process of making salt, it gets spilly, and, uh, end result is what works. We all love Mencken County, and I think we're working to represent taxpayers. Mr. Stahl, welcome.
Was that a prologue to this discussion?
Talking about county employees, and here's Mr. Stahl.
Gentlemen, in your packet, uh, and I didn't write copy, uh, I have given you an explanation. I'm asking that you approve a resolution to exclude, uh, from the normal purchase procedure, uh, services, engineering services for the development of a future landfill sale, uh, regarding the hydro-geological investigation of that sale, um, are anticipated to be, uh, less than fifty thousand dollars. I'm happy to talk about, uh, talk about what this is, or I'm happy to just hear a motion. Uh, I'd be, don't wanna cut anybody short or mislead, but, uh, this is, I'll give you a two-second version. Uh, this is the, this is phase three. It's upside down to how I'm used to looking at it. No, no, it's not. Uh, so this is cell one, this is the, this is the active landfill sale, um, and this area here, denoted in this hash line, uh, was intended to be cell two of phase three. Because of the growth that we've experienced, um, we have, we're, we're looking to enlarge this cell, uh, to gain more, to gain more capacity, uh, to gain a longer life, uh, of the cell, uh, so that we don't wind up in a situation like we're trying to avoid right now of, of having the, the dead of two cells at the same time. We've, I've, I've talked to you about that in previous meetings, the, the step, the other steps we're taking. The critical piece here is, one, uh, when we, when we permit this landfill in general, uh, there's a hydro-investigation, and you see the little dots of, of, of well clusters. When you actually go into construction, uh, additional wells just in this area, uh, are needed to better define bedrock and groundwater. And so, we, we want to do, some of this we have to do, some of it we, we just, I want to do it, it's, I'm sure you can't see it, but there's a little knoll running here, and this original cell was, was attempting to miss that knoll, uh, and the goal was to have the, the sump, the leachate collection system that's in service now be able to serve, to service the next cell as well. Uh, with this expansion, we've, we've crossed this knoll going this way, and we've also crossed it going this way. What we don't know, and what we want to pay particular attention to, is what's happening here, uh, with the underground topography and bedrock. It's, this is a transition area that we just need to know as much as we can about. If we have to put in a second sump here, uh, because we can't gravity to here, uh, and even if we have to put a temporary sump back here and pump it into, uh, the current leachate collection system, um, just because of the way the ground lays, uh, we gotta get to all the low spots. So, that is, this is in preparation of development of phase two, no, sorry, phase three, cell two, um, but we want to get this work done as soon as we can, uh, because this is, this is gonna be critical to the future, uh, future design and permitting. Uh, this is just a close-up, you can kind of see the knoll. Uh, this is our area of concern. We, we just, we think we know what's going on there from the general survey, uh, but we want to do a more focused survey so that we, we're clear on what's going on underground here. Now, answer any questions or hear a motion?
Part of the permitting process, I will agree with what the state requires on anything, but those boxes you gotta check, it'd be nice to put this out to bid to five different counties, but we're kind of in bed, and...
Well, the, I mean, the, the, the company we anticipate getting a price from is, is the one that put in all the original ones. Many of those had to be abandoned during construction, but, uh, but yes, this is, this is sort of a continuation process.
Then we gotta have waste disposal, and we have solid waste program. You need, uh, actual, uh...
I need you to, uh, motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve the resolution related to engineering services.
Is there a second? I'll second him, but... Further discussion?
Chris, is that one time, you're asking for one-time approval, or, uh, future fifty thousand or less?
No, no, no. No, this is one time. I, I mean, I may have another one, but I would bring that back to you. Yeah, yeah. Although it would be a pretty good gig if I could do it once, and just keep sliding them through.
All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, and I'm not gonna excuse myself.
Let's have one, real quick, I'm moving against grandiose, then. Chris, I've talked, there's, you know, we, about good employees and services they provide, we appreciate what the landfill services do, that we utilize, those of us who utilize the convenience centers, a huge, a major basis, and those are, uh, those people are face-making, can't, they're interactable people, and they ain't, any other, any other employee probably in this section of government we've got. And we've talked about this, you and I've talked about this privately a number of times, but we started this discussion, I think some of them are making seven dollars and fifty cents a day. And now we're up to ten...
Eleven...
Eleven, I remember eleven.
Yeah, eleven, eleven and a quarter, somewhere there.
And that's good, I mean, that's an improvement, but still...
But not, yeah.
And I'm not one to just go out and spend money, we just heard from the, uh, you know, we're at forty-five million dollars in fund balance.
It's its own fund, though.
It's a different person, yeah. And he had a fund balance too, and I know he's as huge as it was yours without, and I appreciate that.
His fund balance is for capital, although, not operating.
But, but your income is a usual base.
And, and tipping fees, yes.
And tipping fees, and you go to a fast food restaurant, starting with salaries fifteen, nineteen dollars an hour, and, and these guys do a good job, these convenience centers, and, uh, and, uh, just, it's, it used to be against the minimum wage thing that was pushed heavily, but you know, it's, I don't know, I'm just rambling there, guys, that I guess then past chair, I get that opportunity most of the time, but it bothers me that we don't take a little bit of that care. Now, maybe other departments that I don't know about that are down in that, paying care more, but in today's econ, today's economy, those people are struggling, being twenty hours. We set this thing up twenty-five years ago, and it's still structured today, just like it was there. We'll have to pay these people for twenty hours a week, part-time, without giving benefits. It's, it's a cost-reduction approach that we use. After twenty, how long has it been going? Since the company, the dumpster, dumpster?
Gosh, at least six ninety-three.
Twenty-five, thirty years.
I've since taken, I worked there at the old bridge, since taking it over.
Yeah, you were a dumpster diver, I don't remember seeing you. Homer puts you down in there all the way, on the park. What I'm just, quick here, is that, in, I know you're into this permitting, and that's gonna take a lot of time, but can we, between now and we're starting the new budget next year, you bring us suggestions, and I appreciate your opinion about those, those guys need to make a little bit better. You mentioned some, ideally, maybe some full-time people, we've got Mr. Burke here, he's talked about a pension thing in the past, but can we have a, and Josh was interested in last month, either at your convenience, prior to the budget begin, prior to we start the budget, is, could you give us a synopsis of what it would cost us? I think it's thirty thousand hours a year that those centers are open, so a dollar an hour is thirty thousand dollars that somebody's gotta pay for.
And a dollar on my availability fee, as it happens, is about twenty-eight thousand dollars, so it's pretty close.
Or a hundred A, or a hundred A? Surrounding counties, two hundred.
Oh, there's, we're, we're low on fees.
So, I think most reasonable people in Mencken County would say, hey, they appreciate the services, people have, so they'll really, they'll have, they'll, they'll be getting their doggy out, but, uh, let's, let's have a discussion, open discussion.
Happy, I'm always happy to do it, and, um, like I said, I, I, I mean, you and I, we, not only have we talked about this, we've, we've, we've kind of done two permutations to get where we are now over the last five years, I guess. Um, I would just tell the board, this is, this is now on my sheet, there's, there's a lot of, now, there's several variations that I have worked through in the past, you know, what if we did this, what if we did that? Um, if any of you gentlemen, uh, have a component that, that you want me to consider, uh, as far as, you know, hours, uh, you know, more pay, full-time, part-time, I mean, I'll, I'll put some scenarios together, but if there's a scenario that you have in mind that you would like to see, I'm happy to bet it out and, and make that part of my presentation.
Let me ask one thing.
Yes, sir.
If you have a part-time person, they work for you thirty years, anyway, to, that can be, uh, fifteen years, does that make sense? With Burke?
No.
In retirement system, no.
No, not if, that calls... So, Mr. Burke's now talked about this, and I'm never clear with him, but if you can't do that, it would be a...
We're part of the state's retirement, we don't make the retirement rules. Now, the, I, if you were asking me a different question, which I don't think I've ever thought of before, uh, until you just said that, you know, full-time employees do have longevity benefits, pay, um, I don't know if we could cut the, you know, if we could divide twenty-eight by a thousand and say, okay, Jim, for instance, has got eighteen years, that's equivalent to about, let's just pretend he has twenties, that's easier math, uh, you know, you might could look at a ten-year longevity percentage bonus or something, uh, I mean, I can, again, that's something I can, could put in my metrics of, of what I present back to y'all.
Just to be like a longevity bonus or something that they'd give?
I think that would have to be more county-wide than the personnel policy for all of our time, you know, we could, I wouldn't say...
Yeah, no, yeah.
We wouldn't be able to single out just solid waste part-time, or other part-time.
I think...
EMS and Sheriff's Department, they use a lot of part-time.
Uh, Red Park in summer, Transit, and me, I...
If you're counting all those, you got about two hundred.
I think we're, I think those five departments are the, the biggies, aren't they? And, and I would be amiable and even appreciative if, uh, if Eric wanted to have those department heads form an ad hoc and, and talk about mutual. I'm not necessarily looking for policies beyond what we would happen to have, because you get yourself in trouble when you write a step down, but, uh, but, you know, uh, like Lori said, if it's gonna apply to everybody, I don't, I don't know, I don't know where my people stand as far as where Brent's people stand, and there's, far as where Warren's people stand, I don't know what the playing field is like, so... don't know what the playing field is like, so, and we can even just, a couple of informal meetings just to kind of get a baseline of, of what we want to accomplish and, and what others may have already accomplished that, that I just don't know about.
Appreciate you considering, looking into it.
Sure, sure. I, I appreciate the opportunity whenever it's, whenever it's pitched.
Anything we can do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Oh, you may have to help me, I'm sure I'm reading right, discussion, discussion on, on Macon, out of range, is that, is that what Mr. Van Veen?
No, we're on, yes, that's.
New business, N S 6 D.
And I, I don't know anything about that.
As I stated earlier, Mr. Chairman, in my, oh, piece there that I read to the board in the, in the county, in the county, the board, I spent approximately five hours with the Macon County Maintenance Department head. We rode around and identified different, different properties that were in need of repairs. We got to the library, and upon approaching the entrance to the library, the, the roof system and the walkway that is attached to the building, the posts on the outside have sunk approximately five to six inches, the plate against the building, the bolts have pulled out of it, which, if you look at the sprinkler system that's on the outside, it has shifted to the point where that is touching, the sprinkler system is touching the light fixtures, the beams, the light fixtures are embedding into the beams. So, that needs immediate attention from this county. And once you enter the library in the main entrance, and you look at the peak of the ceiling, on both sides of the peak, about a foot or so on each side is black from mold, which tells me that somehow or another the ridge cap of that roof system is holding water, and the, the wood ceiling on the inside is absorbing that water and turning to mold. Leaving that, and going over into the children's section, I had buckets and stuff underneath the section of the ceiling, ceiling tiles out, not sure if it's condensation or the roof system is leaking, but there are many, many, many ceiling tiles that are out of the ceiling, coated in mold, and then there are other sections of that building that the roof is leaking as well. So, that is way beyond anything that Macon County Maintenance Department is capable, I shouldn't say capable, but I think it's way out of their scope. And so I believe moving forward, it could be a structural engineer that will have to be hired to see where we go to from here. I believe at this point, that roof system, the drive-through and the entry and stuff is salvageable, I believe it can be raised back up and reattached to the building, but that's for a structural engineer to, to decide. So, I'm asking this board tonight, where do we go to from here? But that, if it continues on the path that it is, then we're going to lose the entire entry of that library.
Yeah, but I looked at it, I, I would have, and I couldn't, I mean, what concerns lead is there is a liability issue there. This building is actually separated from the main library, and the outside is settling, I mean, it's settled enough towards detached, the gutters, all the gutters are leaking, snow captured on the roof. I'm saying it's going to fall, but we could, there is a definite, there is some liability. I mean, this thing, it's gone down, it's just a matter of when, but hopefully it's not soon, but yeah, we got, this needs to be addressed.
If you don't address it, we know it, we're likely to, you know.
It's going out there, ADA. You know, whatever, I don't know.
What, is this a motion, or is this a, is this, before we go from here?
I don't know, but again, Mr. Shields, thank you, this is the first I've heard about this, tonight is the first time I've heard about it, so, I think, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at it, and, you know, we need to, we need to evaluate it, we'll get it evaluated. I would request, you know, if we're going to have a structural engineer come out and look at it, that does come with costs, so, just be aware of that, when I catch you back up on the back end. But again, be happy to get that underway, I know we've had that roof looked at a couple times now, and I'll see where we're at in that process, what the, because it was faulty installation, we ran into an instance where we could have, were going to be expired, and so I think we're, we were running that route, I'll check back with Jack on that, and have nothing.
Does that, can we take the vote on, so you can do the voting?
No, I mean, if, if, you know, whatever money we get into, we can find it within the budget, and we'll get you, we'll document that, bring it, bring it back to the board this next meeting.
Don't I, pardon, I've got something else I'd like to say, this, I don't know if you've been involved, or Sheriff?
Damn it, service weapon.
Get it saved, get it saved, for the time of.
Whatever. We got to take a question on that.
I have it, I have it, Sheriff.
Oh, yeah, you go ahead.
So, the sheriff has requested permission to award Sergeant Tony Harper his duty weapon upon, is he a captain, sorry, Captain Tony Harper, his duty weapon upon his official retirement from the Macon County Sheriff's Department, which is planned for, this last work day will be December the 29th, 2023. And General Statute 20187 dot 2A outlines what must be done by the governing board to award the service weapon to a retiring officer. The officer must turn in their weapon at retirement, and then the board of commissioners could declare the weapon as surplus, and then the retired officer would pay the county the amount set by the board, which customarily this board has been a dollar, and then the employee would be awarded the weapon. And the weapon that Mr. Harper has is a Glock Model 17, Gen 5, and we have the serial number for that weapon as well. Sheriff, you want to add anything to that?
You test on everything, that's, I already hear the service, I think, I think that's the least we can do. I've recently done it last year for three other officers while we've been in the.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Four, zero.
Waving on.
Yeah.
All right, that's a little, handball, Chris, hand.
Some of the, some of the, that's something that a blue coffee, or, so, we don't know what happened with that.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Senate table this time.
Second.
Second. More always gets that in there.
Uh, with further discussion, Senate table. All in favor?
Passes four, zero.
Four, zero. And one, five, right? Yes. Something about the, the process for the Macon County, Macon County Board of Trustees.
We did that.
You all got that?
Yeah. Motion to go into closed session.
I present the 143 dash 318 point 11A4 to discuss economic development, as well as to negotiate position on the price of our property under section five. If someone would make that motion, I present that, that to the board. I'm sorry, Mr. Hurley, would you repeat the, would you repeat the? Yes, make a motion to go into the closed session pursuant to 143 dash 318 point 11A4 and five.
Second.
Who made the motion? Josh did.
You, you.
Make the motion.
All second.
I'll find right down all your numbers here.
Okay.
We expect any action?
Yes.
Two weeks, take that.
Any action?
Do we anticipate any action?
No, no.
No, we won't.
There won't be any action in this room, so if y'all want to hang around, I mean, feel free, we're not going to come downstairs by the damn bridge or anything.
Yes, that'd be great.
Thank y'all for being here.
This is Bobby with Macon Media, thank y'all for putting up with me tonight, I'm going to have fun trying to develop this video, so thank y'all for watching, I'm going to shut down the live stream, I will hang around and see if they try to [BLEEP] on me. If I can figure out how to shut it down.